Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, just before I get to the addition to the agenda, I just wanted to make a note that our systems here in the county are down. So the public is aware of that. Our phones are down, our internet is down. Just, I want to make people aware of that as well as our website. So IT has been called in since early this morning and then working on it. We do have temporary service in here for our teams meeting, but just so everybody's aware of that. As far as modifications to the agenda, under highway, we would request to add a third reclamation application. And then, under planning and zoning, it may be wise to switch the order as well.
Yes.
Perhaps put Prairie Lakes at the end and let the others go.
So we'll move number one to the end and put in number two above in the planning and zoning. So the Prairie Lakes will be last. And then, on the highway, the, it's that, it's the resolution one I, so it's 08251I, so we'll put that as number three. It is one I, isn't it?
It is.
No, I had it, but now I can't find it. Did you still mind Barry?
No, I don't.
I found it. Found it.
Is there any, is there any other corrections or additions to the agenda?
The only other note is under Administrator, I know Kelsey from the city is planning to come here to talk about the Tiff district. So if he's in here, perhaps we'll let him go there to my report as well. So we have the order down.
Perfect. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, second.
So, motion by Phil, second by Barry. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. All right, minutes of the July 15th meeting, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I just had a couple of clarifications for page two, under human resources. I'm wondering if we should spell out HCSP and PFML on number one and number three? Just because some people might not know what that means. Yeah.
The thing with, the thing with those, though, they have a resolution with them.
They do.
I mean, that's, I mean, so to look into them, you would go to the resolution. I did look in, right above that, under EDA, the building blocks grant. So the motion is second to round one of building, but there's no resolution on that, so I think more detail should be given to that one. Because it really doesn't, you know, yeah, or we come with resolutions for those and probably a list of who those grants went to with that in the minutes. Otherwise, it would be kind of a moot point.
Yep.
Is there any other?
Just a couple of minor things. I think under, on page two of three again, under the Administrator's report, I don't, I don't know what.
Kudos to Sheriff.
Yeah, I don't think those, I mean, if you want to get into the details of those, otherwise it really, the first one is kudos to Sheriff Department. If we're not, we'd need to explain that, or we, some of these I don't think even need to go in the minutes if they're not, I mean, I don't think, I don't think some of these.
Yeah, if we're going to put that in there, we need to know why we have kudos to Sheriff.
Yeah, because there was some event that they did very well on, I think, but, so let me think. I think that was.
Yeah, that's the only one I had. Does anybody else have any additions or corrections to the minutes? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Barry, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Erica, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, consent agenda. Do we have any items that anybody would wish to pull out of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I don't have any items, but I think it's noteworthy on the acceptance of the Dutton Locks grant. And we'll try to control, I mean, it's nice to know that we're trying to control that buckthorn out there and we got a grant for, what was it, $21,000, I think?
Twenty-one, and then, we have, we're having, we're going to do in-kind.
Like 3,500?
Thirty-five, thirty, yeah, right around there.
With that said, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, a motion by Barry, second by Phil, do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, right, motion carries. All right, Commissioners, open forum.
You're ahead of schedule. This might be the last time you're ahead of schedule.
I would like to, go ahead, yeah, bring it up. Sorry Nate, I didn't mean to interrupt, stop you cold in your tracks, but, thank you. So, if there's anybody that's listed on here that's signed up for open forum that would like to talk to the mining project during planning and zoning, you can defer your time, you can defer to them, so I'll call your name and you can just tell me. Because we're going to give you public comment time during that. So, anyway, so we'll start out here. And I'm assuming most of you are probably that way. If I don't say your name right, I'm very sorry, because I'm not good. Richard Nyik, you can help me on that.
Yeah, Rich would take that.
All right, so Brent Keen. Yep. You're going to talk to, you're going to talk about Tiff?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Okay, all right, perfect. Nate Hunter, same thing, okay, that's what I thought. Jim Coleman. Okay, and K2, okay, thank you. And then, oh boy, Lauren Kersting, did I say that right? Okay. All right. All right, so we don't have anybody else listed. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak during the open forum, just another issue? Okay. So we'll move on to reports and correspondence.
I'll go. Had a watershed meeting on the 16th.
Pelican?
Pelican River Watership, yep, Pelican River Watership meeting on the 16th. We're still working on an MOU with their attorney. To kind of snap zoom, I think Harry was on there too, about the, we were talking about the state shifting costs to the county. Well, SNAP is kind of a federal program, shifting from federal to state, so it all kind of trickles down, but we're the end. So, but I had a question for, a little trivia question, how many consumers of SNAP food assistance do we have in Minnesota? Anyone want to take a guess?
I used to know this, because I went, I attended a training about the same couple of weeks ago.
Five hundred and three, five hundred and thirty-one.
Fifty-six thousand.
Four hundred and forty thousand in Minnesota.
I meant five hundred and thirty-one thousand, sorry.
We got six and a half million people here, so that's, and that one's starting until 2028, so there is some lead time on that. At highway, we're going to talk about this reclamation project that's in our minutes, and we'll get to that. Do some radar signs, that's actually in here too, at two inlets. And one thing we did just start talking about is possibly paving 230th. So this is out by Forest Hills, I guess this has been brought up before. It's a township road right now, it's on the.
It's actually four township.
Four township, yep. It's on the east side of Forest Hills and it goes down to County Six where the gravel permit pit is, Strata. That road just gets beat up. I was on township, our township and another, Eunice, Lakeview and Eunice have the south half mile. And then Detroit and Audubon have the north two and a half miles. And they were talking about maybe trading roads or doing something, so it's just in the works, it's so preliminary that we don't, but we're going to, we're going to keep talking about it and see if we can come up with a plan with that road.
So that, it would be the intention that the county would, or the townships would?
It's four townships that own the road right now, and they, they were talking about maybe trading out the road for another county. The county would take over that road, or other county roads at the township that fit into there.
It's mostly in Audubon Township, which is rich.
Audubon and Detroit.
And.
Yeah, I've talked to those guys about it down there, too.
So when we, when Airport Road closed, this, this was in the discussion then, that this road will get more traffic and.
It does.
It might be something that the county can assist with, well, after discussion with township. And there's a road that the county has that's more of an odd, that more or less closer to a township road, less traffic and, you know, so it's, it's discussions that I think are taking place now that should be. And I think the timing of it is when there's a, this road could qualify, a township can app, can make applications to the, there's a grant.
Local road improvement program.
That they can qualify for and if they can get, and this is a high, this would be a highly sought out, I mean, this project would rate pretty high.
For township.
Yeah.
Well, there's four of them involved, so.
I think, and it's a main throughway, so I think if, when the timing comes, when they get that done and then we can, then that would be a good time to move forward. But I think that's, I think it's reasonable that if you drive that road ever, I mean, I don't drive it because it's pounded so hard.
It's so rough, and that's, yeah, and there, it would, people would use it a lot more if it was asphalt.
I would use it, I mean.
I would use it too, because when this town is busy in the summertime, you don't, it is, it's a good way to get around stuff, so.
So it also goes into with DOT, so there's two intersections right there coming onto Highway 10, so maybe, we were talking about talking with Shiloh and see if they could make that down to one intersection.
And a better.
All this is preliminary.
Better lines.
Correct. Let it be safe for, so preliminary, just in the works, so we had that, want to make you aware of that.
It's already been in the works for five, six years, so.
All right. Prairie Lakes, our incinerator, little increase about, it's going to be about $88,000 increase to Becker County, just things are going up. Does anybody know what the budget is for Prairie Lakes? You want to guess? Prairie Lakes looking at an annual budget, 33 employees, they got a MRF there and an incinerator.
What is this, Quiz Day?
Can we, can we fail this quiz?
Nine point nine billion.
About nine and a half, 10 million?
Nine, nine, I'd say about 9.985 million.
They operate down over there. It's a little increase, we're going to have to, we're working on that through our budgets here at Becker County. It's five counties, our share is 88,000 going up. Took a trip down to Brainerd, Crow Wing County, looked at some solid waste facilities down there just to see if there's something we can do better. Also looked at the parks, and maybe we can get those guys to start sending their mattresses up here for recycling, which is a good thing. They were sending them to Duluth and at twice the cost. Planning and zoning, we're going to talk about some of that here, we're going to talk about both things here, so we'll go through that. Environmental, regional demo landfill, Stan Tech is the engineer on that. It's District Four, which are 11 counties, we have nine people on the committee, they've asked me to be on the committee and I've accepted. So I'm going to be on that, that committee just to see what's, what's happening with that. We talked about that. Our organics rollout is here in August, so we should be getting going with that. And then the big thing out at the MRF, recycling, is it 5F or F5? We're trying to make some headway with that, which, F5, which may be some possibilities there to match up with our ICWIC and program, so that's what I got.
All right, who'd like to go next?
I can go next. I had a couple of meetings, I had our EDA meeting with Richard. One thing, we were recently informed by MMCDC that we were actually required to do them every year, or not every year, we're just required to do them on any of our lead inspection, on any of our house, public housing homes that are older than 1978. And we have 13 houses of them. According to MMCDC, it has always been a requirement, but there's an exception, there's been an exception if you send out an RFP and no one responds, or if the quote for the RFP comes back greater than 50,000. So this year, two agencies responded and provided quotes, and one came in at 74,000 and one came in at 49,745.
But they knew that number.
So.
To do all 13?
To do all 13, yep. So MMCDC is looking into this further, we, no action was taking, taken on moving forward with it, but it's something that we need to look into and possibly budget for 2026.
What are they inspecting for?
They're looking for lead paint.
Mm-hmm.
But I think, what is, remember Erica, the cure for it is to paint over it, is that, so why can't we just go paint over them?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, so I don't, it, it didn't make any sense to me, other than it's a government program.
Shocked by it.
I think if you paint all, all the interiors of the 13 houses, it'd be less and then they'd have all new paint.
That's what I.
It would be less.
That's just assume it's all lead and paint them.
That's what I thought.
I think it would be lessened.
Yeah, so, so anyways, more to come on that. We also have the RFP bid opening for the Maple Avenue Apartments will be on August 15th. And we're still hopeful that that project will be finished yet this year. That's the project where we're putting on the new siding, new doors, new windows, and the decks.
Yep. The deck, I can't believe past cold, but 30 years ago.
Yeah, yeah. A couple of housing updates, we have 25 people on the waiting list for public housing. We are currently have 57 people with housing vouchers, with one actively, has a voucher actively looking for housing, and then 148 applicants on the waiting list for the housing voucher. We are meeting, our housing committee will be meeting this month and hopefully bringing a recommendation on the MMCDC housing contract to the 8 August EDA meeting, as we are working on our budget and need to decide on the levy for the EDA. So then that would come here likely in September. Also had West Central Regional Juvenile Center, we got the cost for 2026 for the secure beds. And that, the cost for Becker County this year is 353,571. I believe that is slightly down from last year, right? Yep, so it's slightly down from last year. And this is based off of a two-year lookback period. If we would have had our meeting right after it, I could have explained it much better, but it goes, it goes off of your use of the facility two years ago and what the current expenses are, and then you get a credit for that. And there's this formula that they figured out, but, so for Becker County, it will be 353,571. We also set the new non-member rate, so if you are not a member of West Central, the rate is now $450 per day, which is up from 375. And then, just one other update for the board, I did have a conversation with Nick Banks yesterday, and he's hoping to come to our next board meeting to give us an update on Toad Mountain, which is likely going to be purchased by the DNR. So they, he just wants to come in, I think we have, we have to approve of it because of the funding and it, and becoming a DNR property. So I am going to the town, the Toad Lake Town Board meeting on Monday just to inform them. I have let them know that I do support it and it's really not, I'm not coming to ask for permission, I'm just coming to provide information, so.
So that would be for the entire property, even the, down by the lake?
Nope, the, the lake portion is not included, where the cabins are, but the bay part is, so part of the lake.
That little skinny point.
Yep.
So they would still have access from Toad Mountain?
Walk in, walk in.
Yeah, they, there is no intention for public access. Yep. So, more information to come, hopefully, at our next board meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I had a couple Lakeland Mental Health meetings, one of the, one of the, kind of the highlights I got, it's, there's a new program that, that they're doing. It's accelerated resolution therapy. It's a, it's a new, it's kind of a new way to look at how to resolve like PTSD's or some traumatic event in your life that you have trouble with. I'm not going to explain it very well, but.
This is like rapid eye movement?
Yes, it deals with rapid eye movement, and so the individual will come in, they don't talk about their problem, I mean, the incident or whatever, but they walk them through it, the therapist does, I mean, it's obviously much more complicated than I'm talking, but they walk them through this, and they revisit it and they visualize it as it happened, now they said, now revisit, now do it how you wish it would have happened. You know, how, how can you, how can you make this outcome what you would have wanted? And again, it has to do with, they watch the eye movement, they don't, they're not talking about the event to the person, but they are walking them through the stress and, and I guess it's having some remarkable success with, with some, you know, with some, a lot of people. And this, the really neat thing about this too, is that this can, this can be effective in as little as one to two meetings. It's, I mean, it's not an ongoing thing, so I strongly suggest if someone has a traumatic event that they have issues with, that they, they maybe try this, this therapy.
Is this coming to DLU, so?
Oh, it's in DLU, she's, I got her, can't remember her name, but she was the one pushing it. And, and she thanked Lakeland Mental Health because, you know, they have ongoing credits that they need, but this, this event cost more and they still allowed it. And now they had 17 therapists within Lakeland Mental Health go get the training for this, and I, it's something kind, it's a little bit different method, I think, so it really would.
When I worked in child protection, that was, it was a fairly new, at that time, and a lot of first responders have used it, and a lot of soldiers, you know, veterans have used it. But it is a great type of therapy for those with PTSD.
Yeah, so it was kind of exciting, and so we, we had a meeting up in Detroit Lakes, and then we had a regular meeting and we're, they're doing financially well, so everything's looking very well. The, the problem right now is Alexandria, they have a huge, huge road construction right in front of the entrance, so a lot of people are having trouble getting there, because some days it's, you know, the route of traffic is difficult, because they're doing the whole sewer water and everything. So they're struggling financially within that area, but overall, they're still, we're still positive, so it's a, it's a good, good year. And their request next year, I just want to, is a 0% increase for any, any levy dollars, so they recognize the problems. But they also, they also, you know, are mudding through what their costs increase are going to be for the state's reduction in Medicare. And so they're, they're being hit with it, and it's, it's a difficult, difficult year. Dave and I had Sunnyside, and I got to tell you, we had some really great news, we got employee retention credit from back in the COVID days of $560,000.
Oh, wow.
Give or take. That did cost us just under $100,000 to get for the company that, that got that for us, but we are, Mary, I'm sure notices that we are doing very well. And we are one of the few small nursing homes that is doing well, and with this grant, we are doing very well. One thing, Mary, I do want to maybe touch base with you, we do have a loan with the county that's about, it's under 600,000 now.
Yeah, it is.
But we, and we're paying interest on that, but we also have a reserve that Mary manages of, now it's what, 2.8? I would maybe ask that we, and we don't get any interest off that, so maybe we can look at taking the interest off our loan, because in some cases, there might be advantages for nursing to have a loan when there's programs come out, so I don't know if we want to pay it off, but maybe it's a fair thing to say that we shouldn't pay interest when we have 2.8 million here and we have 600, so, something we can maybe look at, Barry. Anything else on Sunnyside?
So, just one thing I, I noticed, well, the, the workforce board is going, is raised, has raised up wages for all nursing homes and.
That's a requirement from the state.
From the state, yes.
If you remember, that happened last year, so that's coming into effect on January 26th.
Yep, and so our, we, Sunnyside has done a great job of increasing the wages to get them pretty close, but it is going to affect us about, what'd they say, about 15,000?
$15,000 increase, which, it'll increase the CNA's starting wage from 19 to 22, and then another individual from 2350 to 27, or another group, 23.
When I worked at the CNA, I made $4.25.
That's, that's what I meant, I'm saying like, CNA is now 2250, that's actually a.
A fair.
Fair wage.
Fair for starting, so. Yeah, again, Sunnyside's looking very well, they, we did discuss the future of AI even in the nursing home and some of the coding and stuff, so. Also had Sheriff's Committee, I, we went over the budgets, I think, except the disposal of the tires, I think, everything's on the agenda.
Yep.
We have tires taken off from, and they were, they weren't adequate tires for sheriff's vehicles, so we have many sets of those tires. We are selling those, I thought we should try out, and we approved this before, so it's not, but they still haven't done it. So we are looking at selling some on a local auction site, because, you know, people can, you know, tires are expensive, so if someone can give advantage of a good used set, I mean.
And they're considered used, but they're actually brand-new tires, they're not, they've never been used, they've never been, I mean, they've never been driven on, well, maybe.
Very low.
Very, under, under 50 miles, probably.
So why can't we use them?
They're, they're like street tires and they need.
You know, when you get a new car, the tires on it are usually for high, you know.
Yeah, for mileage performance.
So they're usually a very hard, no traction, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, why are we buying squads that don't have the right tires on them?
We're getting them off a lot, a lot of them.
Yeah.
They're not specially made, aren't the police cars specially made? They're not?
Yeah, and we couldn't even hardly get them before, so.
No, we buy the vehicles and then they're equipped with all the, to send them to a.
We pay a company.
But these vehicles are just regular off-the-line vehicles.
Well, they're, I think they're highway, they're highway or sheriff's vehicles, but they're, you know, usually you don't have a good tire that's, I mean, you can get a, they'd be fine if you're in cities, but if you start going in country gravel roads.
Gravel roads and. Todd, please explain them.
Yeah, there you go.
For rural Minnesota, more city.
Thanks for clarifying that, Sheriff.
Thanks, Todd.
And we had courthouse, I think courthouse, everything was.
Yeah, the only thing that wasn't on there was the IT, the on-call, Judy gave us an update on the Clearwater County and the.
VPN?
Yeah, she just gave us an update on how many calls they have and what, and stuff like that, so.
Additionally than what was brought to you?
Yeah, well, no, she, she talked about how, and, and the funding for them, we do, we do it as a service to, for the Whiter Nation and for Clearwater.
The committee decided, thought that it would be in the best interest for us, us to keep doing that for those counties.
Doing a service.
Because we want, we want to be the server.
We want to be the host and we want to have our own server, and, yeah.
Mr. Chair, would, would those people receiving benefits be considered helping out with the cost?
Of the on-call?
Yes.
There was a discussion, we didn't come to a real solid conclusion.
We didn't come, yeah.
It was, it was, would be, it would be, I wouldn't say, I think we figured it would be just a few thousand dollars and then you split that and is it, is it. Is it worth time to ask for that type of money, I mean, and I don't think we deemed that would be.
We, we kind of deemed it would.
If it would have been a higher dollar amount, it would be something we'd look at.
I think that the Whiter Nation had three calls and Clearwater had two.
So our recommendation was not to, not.
Mr. Chair, how, how much was the total cost on that?
Twenty.
$26,000 and change.
I mean, we, we want to be the, we want to be the host, I mean, we don't want to, so. Okay.
Do you have anything else?
No.
All right, Richard, did you?
No, I had environmental with Phil and county, the highway with Phil, and then EDA with Erica, and I don't have anything to add, do you?
I'll be, I'll be quick, I had a couple. We had the West Central Economic Development District Board, which is the West Central Initiative plus the EDD combined together to make that big.
We had the West Central Economic Development District Board, which is the West Central Initiative plus the EDD combined together to make that big acronym. Basically, we, there's a, there's a, several things we discussed because we only meet quarterly, but just two things. They, so they're just like a lot of other government agencies that counties, their budget goes from July 1st to January 30th of the following year. So they, they actually in that period of time had thirty-four, they, what, what, what Central Initiative does is it, it loans money for economic development to our region. And our region basically is, is, uh. District four, pretty much, our AMC district, basically. And so they had thirty-four loan applications and twenty-four approved. And they also tried to spend, they, they, their goal is to spend at least eighty-two percent of the money they have in their pool to loan out every year. And then we did have a resolution for a revolving loan fund, which basically is when people pay loans back, then that money goes back to the West Central Initiative and then they have it in a pool. And we have to have a resolution every year to allow Western to loan that money back out. So that's kind of how it works. And then they, then they had the two, two act, two people from the University of Minnesota come in and talk about, we, actually, the, the West Central Initiative has a partnership with the University of Minnesota. It's a climate adaptation partnership. And they talked about, you know, we, we all know that we are having more severe weather than we have had. You know, just, just as, as an example. And then one of the things is, does your, they asked us, does your county have a hazardous mitigation planning? And do you have funding for hazardous mitigation?
Ask our safety committee.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
We don't have any funding.
So, and that's just one thing. And then I have a quiz since Mr., since Commissioner Nelson had a quiz, I have one too.
I haven't had all my.
So since eighteen eighty-five in our region, or in Minnesota, actually, how much has the, how much has the, uh, temperature raised since eighteen eighty-five in Minnesota? What percentage?
What percentage?
Yeah.
How many degrees?
Well, I don't.
Thirty-five percent.
No. Twelve.
Is it twelve?
No.
Just picked out a number.
Three point two percent.
Oh, that's nothing. Just kidding.
They, they said, the climate people said that's a huge amount.
Okay.
Thirty-five percent, we'd be boiling in a pot.
Well, don't ask questions if you don't want.
Yeah, that's true. So then I had a DAC meeting and originally back a few months ago, Tina, Senator Tina Smith was planning a walkthrough through the DAC to just check out the facility and see the, see how things are operated and so forth. And, and it was canceled because of the, you know, obviously the assassinations that happened in, in, in the cities. So then just a few, a few weeks ago, she had two of her staff members come through and check out the DAC and it was very positive. They wanted to see the programming. They wanted to see the need for funding from DHS to, and why, why it's necessary that we have facilities like this. So it was a great, great, great thing for the promotion of our DAC toward, actually, because most, night, the vast majority of the funding for the DAC comes from Department of Human Servi, or Human Services in the state. So that was, that was helpful. And then a couple other things. We started, we're starting to plan for a proposed building expansion. We have our first building committee meeting next week. So we're going to discuss, we, we already, we've met with, the whole board has met with the architect. And now we're going to do kind of more planning on what we want this expansion to look like and so forth. The DAC is actually doing pretty well financially. We, yeah, our, our clients are up and so we have more funding coming in and, and we're, we're basically doing, doing really well. I also had a Heartland Trail meeting. It was a very interesting meeting. It was at Lyons Park in Fraser. The whole, the main purpose of the meeting at the end was to dedicate the trail, which, which is, which is a, is a, the trailhead, not trailhead, but the trail ends across the road from Lyons Park. And we had a ribbon cutting ceremony and the TB was there and so, but that was the main thing. But we also talked about the trail study routes from Dunlax to Buck's Mills, the partnership for health. Remember, we, we, they're going to pay for the majority of it. We, I think, decided to put some money in the city has and so, so the Lakeview Township. So that's, that's going to happen. There also is still that roughly five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars funding remaining from the two thousand, three grand, twenty-three grand?
Twenty-three.
Was it twenty or twenty? Was it twenty grand? Yeah. And that has to be used by December thirty-first to twenty-seventh. And it cannot be used for any new studies or new construction. It has to be, Jim, correct me if I'm completely wrong. It has to be used for current places on, on the trail from Fraser to Detroit Lakes. It can be used like for stuff inside of Fraser, going through Fraser or going through Detroit Lakes. But it, but, so we're going to meet this, this fall as a committee and kind of come up with a plan of how we want to use that money. Is that, did I say, is that? Oh, we can do it. But on, but it has to be on that section of the trail, right? That was, okay, it's within Becker County. Okay, 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 okay. Okay, that makes sense though. And then it was just really nice to meet all of the people that you see online or, or don't have a face online and meet them in person because they all showed up. So that was pretty interesting.
Um, one, one thing, I have an individual that contacted me that would like to help on that or anything they could do to help that trail from Dunlax to Buck's Mills. They were real excited about that. So.
Awesome.
Keep me in the loop and I'll pass that on. I do have a question for Jim Binks. He's here. I saw that the City of Ottoman had a meeting on the, in the intersection on Highway 10. Were you involved in that?
Yes.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of it, but could you, was, what was the discussion on that? Was that stoplights at Highway 10?
They're just starting a study to look at access management, stoplights, brought up, other options they're looking at for the community. And then also partnerships for health to pair with the city. We're looking at new intersections, made.
Yeah, I, I would, if you appreciate if you could include me on any meetings in Ottoman.
Okay. And then I also had a historical society meeting. We are pretty close to planning the event for October 11th at the Pavilion, which is the last of, currently it's planned to be the last official event in the Pavilion before it's, before the new one is constructed. So basically, we're, they're going to have, we're going to have, in the morning, it's going to be, there's going to be bingo in the morning. There's going to be a polka band and there's going to be some, some sing, single, or some acoustic acts. Yeah, that's, and then there's going to, we, we tried to get Robbie V to come, but he had another engagement. He wanted to come, but, but, uh, because that would, because his, his parents, when they were fifteen, met at the Pavilion. So anybody knew that.
I don't even know who Robbie V is.
Uh, yeah, he's, he's Bobby V's son. You don't know Bobby V? Okay, that's fine.
Should I?
No, he's a singer. He actually.
I know polka music.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know.
And then, and then they're going to cap off the night with thirty, thirty-two blow playing at the Pavilion. So it should be a good plan. We're, we have a, we have another historical society meeting after, at this afternoon or tonight. And we're going to probably approve this plan. So. Then the last thing I had is the Becker County Fair was put on.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, was it two weeks ago now? Or was it last week?
It was.
Two weeks ago. And it, it went really well. I'm sure we'll get a, a report eventually from the, so, fair board members of how, how the fair went. The rodeo was Wednesday and Thursday. I, it, it was, it's a great event. It wasn't, it's not a hugely attended event, but it was good. Um, the derby, derbies were good. All the, you know, auctions and the shows and everything and the.
I did attend, I did attend the, the auction and there was well over a hundred thousand dollars raised again for our Becker County youth. So kudos to all of the community members that came. It's always, I'm, I did not start attending those livestock auctions until I became a commissioner. So this is my third one and I'm always in awe every year at the money that is spent on them youth. So I think it's a great investment to our youth in the agriculture.
It was, it was another record year of sale or.
Yeah, I want to say I heard a hundred and thirty thousand, but.
I don't know the number.
Don't quote me on that because I might be wrong.
As well as, as well as the fair went, I, I want to express our prayers for the recovery of the individual in the fire. I know, I have not heard how, how he's doing, but anytime you have burns involved, it's a, it's a scary thing. So just, just for the family and the individual, know that we're praying for you and, and your recovery, so.
Yep. And then we also served pie and ice cream to the seniors. So that went really well. And I was going to say something about qualifying, but I found out that I qualified too at fifty-five.
You qualify for a senior?
Yes. I, I gave.
You guys are old.
That's good. That's, we, we know who Robbie V is too.
I know.
All right. Does anybody else have anything else for reports and correspondence? All right. Let's move to appointments. So let's start out with Mr. Colwell. Is he hiding?
Yeah.
I had to do, this is only the second time I've done this. I'll probably screw it up. So, so, so please raise your right hand. I, Jason Colwell, do solemnly swear.
I, Jason Colwell, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially execute.
That I will faithfully and impartially execute.
And discharge the duties of the Assistant County Veteran Service Officer.
And discharge the duties of the Assistant County Veteran Service Officer.
In the county of Becker, state of Minnesota.
In the county of Becker, state of Minnesota.
According to the law and to the best of, of my judgment and ability.
According to the law and the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to have you here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have had, they, would you just introduce yourself and say who you are and what you've done?
Sure.
Thanks, Jason.
You bet.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here this morning. My name is Jason Colwell. I, lifelong member of Becker County, or resident of Becker County. I was born in Detroit Lakes here, just up the road. I went to DL High School, joined the service after that. I spent twenty-nine years with the Air National Guard in Fargo with seven deployments, most of them overseas. Applied and was accepted for this position. I'm very, very excited about working with the veterans. For years, my father, Dave Colwell, ran the VFW. He ran the Veterans Organization for the Avenue of Flags. So they've always been a part of my life and I really, really look forward to moving that into a career. Do you have any questions for me?
No, just welcome.
Yeah, welcome. And thank you for choosing Becker County.
Love this county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I do. You want it? I, I just put it in that folder. Yeah. All right. Do we have any other appointments? All right. Let's move on to our county administrator.
Do you want me to go or? We talked about.
Was Kel, what time was Kelsey? That we have, we have Keen and.
Yeah, however you want to do it.
Let's just go right to, to the, to the resolution. So, yeah, so we're going to, we're going to, you guys, would you guys like to come up and please, and then just state your names?
Nate Hunter.
Brent Keen.
And then, yeah. So we're talking about the TIF, the Project Forty-four. So go, go ahead.
Yes, Highland Lakeview Apartments is what we're looking at getting a TIF for. It's a thirty-six unit apartment building. Looking, located just above the kind of the Holiday Inn on Highland Drive. Just, uh, with the housing study that came out here, was that?
Last fall.
Last fall, we were following through with some of the recommendations that the housing study came up with. And as you guys are aware, you know, the cost of housing is extremely expensive and just trying to make sense of the cash flow of, of the building and everything. So just kind of, you know, costs of construction, you know, in some cases have tripled and doubled. So we applied for a workforce housing TIF that puts us in front of all three districts or, uh, the city, Becker County and.
School board.
The school board. So we all have to get approval through you guys to move forward with that tip. So it's, it's a nine-year TIF. It's mandated by the, the state. And, but it has to have all three approvals and a plus, it has to fall into a one percent vacancy rate within a fifteen mile radius of, of Detroit Lakes.
How many units?
Thirty-six units.
Thirty-six. Does anybody have any questions for Nate or?
I'll move to approve Resolution eight twenty-five one D.
So we have a motion by Phil. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Richard. Do we have any more discussion?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I, I mean, I think it's a big deal when you do the, the TIF programs and for what, with, with the housing shortages, this is, you know, it's the apartments and, you know, better, better to me, in my opinion, was homes, but the housing shortage is significant. So I, I don't, we shouldn't take this lightly. I think this is a program where we can move forward on. But this isn't something that we just traditionally have just easily done. But this is a, I, I think this is a reasonable and, and good way, good, especially in this day and age, in today's world right now. This is a good program to enhance this attractiveness for the developers for it, so.
And I think studies have showed too that younger kids want apartments. Like they don't want to own homes. So I think, I, so I think apartments do make sense for this area.
Well, we're quite short of housing. I can't remember what the numbers were.
I, yeah.
And we look, every, every month, we look at ways to do housing and it boils down to the cost and, and investors and we're short of them, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, you said not to take this lightly. What, what did you mean by that? I mean, we need housing. Everybody said that. What?
Well, I mean, the, it's a reduction of taxes. So it's a, it's a shift and, I mean, we get abatements or, I mean, it, it's, it just, you don't do this lightly. I think this is a good reason, good cause, but we don't, everyone that comes through here isn't going to get approval of a, a TIF or a, I mean, there's been businesses that have asked them before and I've been opposed to them. And, I mean, I mean, this is years and years. We don't get a lot of them. And this is the reason why. Because it is, it is a, in my opinion, it should be a high threshold to get this.
Mr. Chair, one thing I think is very important that you don't run these out twenty-five years. This is a nine-year TIF as I understand it. I think that's reasonable. We need the housing and, you know, to give up that tax, I mean, it's not, if they don't go through with it, we don't have the housing anyway and it's only generated in the tax that it does right now going forward. So, yeah, but I, I agree. Don't take it lightly. To me, it comes down to how long it's going to be a lot of times, but.
Nate had something to.
I'll be covering it. Thank you. So do we have any more discussion?
I see Larry's here, but Larry, if, if you speak, we have a.
Yep.
It's got the green light to go so far, Larry. So maybe, uh, maybe not, not, not.
I changed my mind.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Have you gone in, I'm assuming the city, have you gone in front of the city or the school board yet?
We go in front of the school board tomorrow night at their special meeting and then we go to the Development Authority on Thursday morning. And then we're at the city council meeting next week.
Okay.
On the twelfth, I believe.
Okay.
So, yeah, so if we, everything is approved, we would break ground this month yet.
Okay.
Oh, cool. That's awesome. All right. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
Best of luck.
Yeah, good luck to you guys. Thanks. Thank you. All right. Carrie. So, so yes, go ahead, Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few updates for the board. We are working diligently on departmental budgets. Those were due by the departments, I believe it's today. Majority of the departments have gotten preliminary budgets to us. So we were plugging numbers in and seeing where we will end up. And as you all know, we have a work session next Monday at eight. And as you all know, we have a work session next Monday at 8:00. And my hope would be that we will have some numbers for levy, kind of where we are standing at that point. And so one of the main focuses on the budgeting cycle, as you all know, we had special general account. We had several items that were coming out of there that weren't budgeted within departments. We went through there, several of us, to make sure that we have all of those items budgeted for within the appropriate departments.
Mr. Chair, and to that, if you looked, if you looked at our budget for today, you saw that one of the recorders' funds is in a negative. So we've been paying other fees out of that recorder's fund that that gets, you know, that's paid for by documented register, or recording fees. So we're gonna have to shift that over into the general, some of those expenses over into the general levy, because that's at a negative, and we can't, I mean, do negative spend. So that's gonna be a cost moving forward also.
Yes.
That's just one of, that's just one of the things that we've been, when we knew that, that we were gonna end up negative spending on that eventually. So now, unfortunately, now it's come to fruition that we will now have to shift that over into.
Yep.
So with the watershed building that has been signed off on and the check went out.
Did you vote for that? I can't remember.
I did not. Do we wanna bring it back up and chat about it some more?
So that is moving forward. We did have, we did utilize our SafeSure, the company that we contract for with, for our safety training. They did do a walkthrough of our facilities last week, so we just got the written reports, I believe it was within the last day or so. So we're going through those to make sure that we can make any adjustments, and that's just really for our own benefit to see, you know, they are very helpful. They go through and give a lot of suggestions about modifications or changes that we should be looking at, or things that they've seen as they did their walkthrough of the buildings. So that is in process. The benefits committee did meet, and I don't believe either of the commissioners maybe made it, so I'll give a quick update on that. The RFP is out, we are requesting bids for medical insurance, because we're expecting a significant hike in our premiums for county employees for insurance. We haven't gotten final numbers, but we just want to ensure that we are getting, you know, the best price for our employees and for the county for insurance. Let's see here, I did take a, the opportunity, I met with the food pantry, and I asked if I could go over there, because I wanted to see the facility. I'd never been through it, it's quite the operation. And they are seeing a significant, and he's gonna probably come back here in September and give some additional stats to the board. But we talked about his request for appropriation, and he just spoke to the uptick in the families that they're serving, and seeing more homeless population here in this location.
Yeah, just a quick note of that facility, I'm gonna use Sandy Gunderson's words, she's in the crowd. I don't know if any of you ever went into the old food shelter, but it was not, the new one is amazing. It's bright, it's.
It is grocery shopping.
Everything is lighted up, and in words of Sandy, it makes the people that come in feel appreciated and important and wanted. So that's huge for Becker County.
Yeah, and you know, one of the reasons why it is the way it is is because of the SNAP Ed program, which is unfortunate that that has now been eliminated. But that is their model that they can't come to food shelves and try to implement, and Becker County did a fantastic job doing it, so.
Yep.
So the other just interesting, I think, tidbit, takeaway for me from there was that Dale did speak to the size of the families that are coming in. Big, big families, multi-generational families, and that's probably, we talked about our housing situation here and the lack of affordable housing. So what they're seeing is, you know, extended family living all in one unit, so big families coming through the food pantry as well. There is a meeting on, at the Department of Corrections probation, I'll be going to. It's a kickoff for the F5 program that's coming in, mentorship. And so with that, there's also some discussions that I am having with Environmental Services, Better Futures, and I have a meeting, I believe, with two of the three judges here. Really what we're trying to do is staff the Better Futures, that recycle, that mattress recycling program. And their mission really is to give second chances to individuals coming out of jails and prisons. So we are working closely with Department of Corrections and their referring people, so we're hoping that we'll see an uptick in our staffing there. Also, really looking at, with the loss of funding for our STS crew and some of those, what can be done with that new program? That pre-release, early release of those individuals waiting for their finalization of their court appearances and charges? And whether or not some of the, those individuals perhaps could be utilized as well. So that's been an ongoing process. Going back to, I know I referenced the work session on Monday, and perhaps this, the board, I don't believe that's a per diem meeting. So that might be something that you want to decide.
It's a, and I think I mentioned this, was it to Piggy, that we should probably get a list of all of our meetings? And especially for, you know, you guys are fairly new what the practice is, if it's a per diem or mileage only. So maybe we can get that list going and.
Yeah, I looked for a list, and the chair believed that there was a list at one point, I couldn't find one, but I'm still.
There should have been a list from January.
Yeah, it should be in the January packet.
Yeah, so I gotta go back, I found the resolution, but I didn't find the list, so.
Mr. Chair, did we, did we decide on eight, I know you had asked about an 8 o'clock meeting versus 8:30, do we decide on a time, 8 o'clock?
8 o'clock, we're gonna start earlier, yes.
Is there any, do we want to make it, I mean, is it a per diem meeting, or if it isn't, do we want to? Do we wanna worry about it later?
It's, I mean, I think you have to make, just make the decision one way or the other.
Okay, so do I entertain a motion to?
I mean, what constitutes a per diem meeting, maybe we start there.
Well.
I mean, that, I've never understood that, I know which ones, you know, my committee meetings.
The standing committee meetings are.
That's what I do, so I don't know, like, what, what is the definition?
In the past, I mean, if you're not on a committee, you don't get a per diem, I mean, if you wanna attend a watershed meeting, then you're not on.
Yeah.
If you want to attend, the township meetings are not per diem meetings. If you have a constituents, they're not per diem meetings.
Yes.
Board of Adjustments in the past has not been a per diem meeting, it's been mileage only.
Our board meetings are not per diem meetings, so.
Yep.
I think you call, you ask someone to go attend meetings, and you, that's, that's a per diem meeting, that may be the line, so.
And.
But Board of Adjustments isn't.
No, and then the other meetings that have been per diem meetings, like when we worked on the comp plan as a board, that was, that was a per diem.
That was a per diem.
And then when we do our road tour as a board, that's per diem, so I.
It has not been a, it's been back and forth, so.
It's been back and forth.
Not consistent.
I think you, maybe you ask, maybe you just drop a rough policy and we.
Go from there.
And go.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And then we can address it at our next meeting.
Sure.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Carrie, so my first time going through this budget, what are the, what is the expectations on Monday? What, do we need, do we bring our departments we're on, do we bring that information, those budgets? We're gonna go through all those budgets, or what exactly?
The highlight for the work session, and there was an agenda that Piggy was putting together, is really the bigger departments budgets. That was the request of the chair.
So we're all, all gonna look at the budgets?
The bigger departments, and then we'll give, I'll give a summary of the smaller departments, because most of that is wages. And my hope would be that we'll have some discussions about the, where the levy's going to land, what the appropriations are, that are being requested, and what that all looks like in the big picture. As well as starting some conversation about some planning for capital improvement.
I would also like to make sure we discuss the appropriations to other agencies.
Yes.
That's what she's talking.
Yes, that's on, that's on the radar, yes.
And they've all got the requests in all.
I think we have most of them, I think we're missing one or two, yes.
If we don't receive them, I'm assuming it's a zero.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one other thing, Carrie, in my subcommittees, where we've been talking about this, this new paid family leave thing, we're creating a line item for that. Are all the departments doing that, so we know exactly what that is, that line item?
We do have the amount for that, and if you recall, we went out for a bid process for that, and we were able to get a better rate than the state rate.
Right, $194,000, but I'm talking about all those, in all of the subcommittees, they'd have a line item for it.
There is a line item for paid family, yes.
Yeah, right.
And the, yeah, the split on.
Okay.
So that has been included as well.
Thank you.
And I think that's all I have.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for Carrie? All right, let's move on to Human Resources, Tierra. Good morning, Tierra.
Good morning. So I have three items for all of you to review today. The first item is a full-time custodian 2 position. So this is one of the career letters that was brought forward with the job descriptions earlier in the year. It was approved as a job description, but now there is an individual that does meet all of the qualifications. This was not budgeted for, for 2025. However, maintenance did budget for two, maintenance 2 positions. So there is enough money left in their budget to cover what the cost difference would be. It's approximately 1,600 increased cost for the remainder of the year for this position, and they have a remaining 4,300 left in their budget.
Do we have?
Approve 1G.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second motion by Barry, a second by Erica, do we have any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries.
Okay, the second item is on behalf of the sheriff. So this is for a temporary full-time deputy position. We have one deputy who is out on an extended leave. So we are requesting to backfill that on a temporary basis for a six-month period. By the end of that six-month period, we should understand better if that individual is going to be coming back or not. And there is, of course, a cost upfront to fill this position, however, we do get reimbursed for the wages of the individual that is out.
That's why we kinda pushed this back a little bit.
Yeah.
Because we wanted to make sure that that was reimbursable, and then found out that it was, so we're fine with moving.
Yeah, the committees.
Mr. Chair.
Through M.C.I.T. Insurance.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that was another question.
No, actually, through the state.
Through PARO.
Sorry.
So mine was in insurance.
Who pays it?
The state would be paying it back, so it's the Parodisability Program. So it would be the state.
Would we revisit this again in six months then?
I was just gonna ask, if we could, if the person's not back, we could reassess them.
Correct, we should have a pretty good grasp on if they would be returning or not at that point, and either bring it back to extend the temporary position, or potentially bring it back to fill it completely.
If the, if the position, if there becomes a position vacant, it would be up the sheriff's discretion then, whether he needs to come back or not, because it's within budget. Then it would be filling that budget.
Budget position.
So if that, if the position resigned or retired or whatever, and he chooses to fill that full-time, he can without coming back to us. Because it's replacing a, that was the decision that was made. Yep.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so this is a, the reason we put a timeline on this, so that going into this, the person that takes that position knows that it's a potential position that after six months will no longer be. So that everybody's aware of the situation going into this.
Can I request, Mr. Chair, can I request that we revisit this in six months again? Or, Barry, you said we don't have to.
It will be revisited in six months if it's a, if it's a.
Temporary.
Add-on temporary.
Yeah.
But if the, if it has resolved itself, it will not come back.
Okay, that's fair, okay.
All right, do we have a, do we have a motion to approve 1E?
So moved.
All right, a motion by Erica, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Richard, any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, Tierra, next one.
So the last item that I have is a revision to the career ladder policy that has come before you, I think this is now the third time. We anticipated this coming up, didn't anticipate it being so soon. So we do now have an individual that if they do make a move in a career ladder, they would be running up against that, that they've already had their anniversary date pass in the year. We have not ran into this yet. So that is where I'm requesting to put the, within the last six months. So potentially, somebody could go up to the five-month, almost six-month period without getting an additional step. But over six months, it just feels like that wouldn't be fair for the employee.
And in this one and the previous ladder, I think we're catching up to what our, I mean, it's unfortunate, we're still catching up to the, our change in our. So in the future, these, we will not be seeing these modifications or changes in career ladders. But right now, we are, and I think it's, I think it's appropriate, so make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the changes to the, policy changes to career ladders, we have a second.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Barry, a second by Erica, do we have any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Tierra. All right, let's go to Highway Jim. What? Yeah, no, we're moving on. I think we have each.
Yep.
Good morning, Commissioners. For your approval today, I always got a few items here. First item is a capital outlay request to purchase another pair of speed signs. Currently, the county has one pair that we kinda move around the county at different locations based off of complaints of speeding and requests and that. We get a lot of demand for these signs in the different areas, and some of them are way out in Two Inlets, and others are around the lakes here quite a bit. And I know Ponsford is good, we get requests from them. And so we talked with the Sheriff's Department, and we came up with some money, we would like to get another set, so we can kinda cover more areas and maybe focus on leaving signs in the area for extended periods of time to kinda swell those speeds. And with these signs, we can monitor when that speeding is occurring, or if it's resolved itself with the speed sign. So our signs here are for $11,266. They've gone up about $1,000 from last year when we purchased them. But we do have budget, our money in our budgets to purchase these signs, so we're making that request to you.
Are these signs gonna be mobile? I mean, they're not gonna be in one spot the whole time?
Well, they are still mobile. We are considering, you know, certain areas, leaving them for more extended periods of time. You know, with the number of requests we get in summer, they kinda, sometimes they're only in an area for a short period of time, and then things reoccur. So maybe we could have one set that we leave for, you know, maybe half a summer, and then move it someplace else where it needs a long for half a summer, and then we have some other areas we can concentrate, you know, moving around and hopscotching. But sometimes it is more effective if you leave that sign permanently, tell people, get adjusted and.
Is there any data that's collected on this?
And we can collect the data and see if it helps, and we can turn the signs off, you know, to see if all of a sudden it starts reoccurring, you know, and still keep collecting those data, so it's.
With the radar.
With the radar and stuff like that, so it's a good tool, I think, and with the amount of requests I get, I think, you know, we'll balance the use for them. And I know when you look at places like Two Inlets and Ponsford, that's quite a stretch to send extra enforcement out all the time. We get those complaints out there, and, but.
Like, I tell you, you don't speed through Audubon anymore, I can tell you that.
Not because of the speed.
I tell you what, I, I'm not a, I mean, I don't think the county should be putting up these very often. I, they're just expensive, I mean, $11,000 for two of them, and I, I just, I just question the, I mean, it gets to a point where we can't have speed signs, radar speed signs everywhere, that's.
No, but they are, they do, they do work, and people, and so if we move them around, I agree, Barry, we can't, we can't have them everywhere, but we should have them, they do work, and we, if we move them around, I know they make me slow down.
The only thing that works is a ticket.
Well, no.
I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I did tell Jim yesterday in finance that I would for sure advocate for an additional one, because I get calls every, very often from the Ponsford area. And if you know where that Ponsford area is, there are houses very close to the road. And I think it's gotten better since we don't have that detour from the Highway 34. And, and I think it's gotten better since we don't have that detour from the Highway 34 construction. But those that live there say they do help.
And they, they slow me down when I, I slow down.
There's some people that think that's a high-score sign, though.
I, I do know that Two Inlets.
I got the data in Lakeview.
I do know that Two Inlets is a...
Yeah.
I've, I've gone through there, not 30 miles an hour pulling my boat, and then realized it till I was, yeah, I broke the law.
You broke a law?
I know, I know that there's places that help fund these also, like in the, in the villages. Or is that, is this being helped fund up by?
Not there, it's not.
Well, Two Inlets is a little bit difficult. I mean, they have a, the church there and the grocery store. They don't have a lot of particip, I don't know if the Lake Association would contribute funds for that.
Isn't it the township that did it in Cormorant?
Correct, yes, they did, yep.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, Lakeview Township did this too, and I operated the sign. I moved it weekly in our township where people had requested. And I did collect all the data. So I would suggest that, that we do try to collect the data to see if these things are making a difference. But I kind of agree with Barry, I think they should be limited. I'm, I won't be against this, but we need to have some, some data. The sign can be off and still collect the data, I'm sure, or it can be on. And you'd be able to judge if the speeds are lowered. My, my findings in six years of moving these signs around every summer didn't lower the speed a bit. But you always got somebody coming through there at 2:00 a.m. that was seeing for high score.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the person that people remember.
Yeah. No photo, any photo, picture, no camera?
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
I'll second.
$11,266 for two signs.
So we have a motion by Erica and a second by Richard. Do we have any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries.
Next item, we're requesting dispose of county property. We would like to put up for sale two of our pup trailers, which we use for hauling aggregates and that. These are old trailers that are no longer functioning, two of them, a 1994 trailer. So we sold one of these, I don't know, maybe five, six years ago, and they have some attraction to certain people. Some people, you know, who farm might want to use them or...
Do you have serial numbers for those? You might?
Uh, probably.
I think you'll need those to sell them. So I'll make a motion to authorize the sale of two 1994 Clement pup trailers with the serial numbers.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Barry and a second by Phil. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, Jim, last one.
Final item that was added as an extra item is a approval of a quote. We are, you recall, about a month ago, asked to co-solicite quotes for this Reclamite Asphalt Rejuvenation Project that we're using on Highland Drive, Westlake Drive, and Richwood Road. We received one quote back in the amount of $93,864, $864 for corrective asphalt materials. We're, that's right in the range where we thought. This is right around $1.15 a square yard, which is very competitive.
Dollar what?
Dollar 15 a square yard.
Yep.
So we're recommending approval.
Do we have, I entertain a motion for one aye.
I'll make a motion.
So a motion by Richard, second by Barry, or second by Phil, sorry. Sorry, Barry insulted you again. Didn't Phil. Do we have any further discussion?
Jim, what, what is the difference between this and Seal Coat in price? So this is 150?
This is very comparable to what we would probably expend on Seal Coat. You know, if we do townships, you know, help them out, we charge about the same rate. Normally, Seal Coat, if it was contracted out, is more in the range of $2.50 a square yard. So this is a good savings, and it's been demonstrated to perform well as we're going to be using it as like an initial application in our areas like the cities and that, so we don't have that sand and that. It's one of the, one thing that's good about it, we don't have to restripe the road.
Stripe.
The dust that we put over top of it wears off shortly after, and...
Is it a sand or a dust you put on it?
It's, it's limestone, they call it limestone screenings, kind of. It's finer than, it's not rock.
Do you, do you sweep that off then?
And then it's, yes, we sweep that off, and that's part of the contract as well.
Okay. Oh, they're doing the sweeping too?
On the roads with curb and gutter, yeah. I think we'll be doing Richwood Road going out west there where we don't have to sweep or have curb and gutter. We can sweep it into the shoulder.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries. All right, thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Land, Land Use and Environmental Services, Mr. Schoen.
Morning, Mr. Chair, board members.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Steve.
We have, actually, there was three requests today. One was on the consent agenda, was that approved?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. First item is a capital purchase request to buy a compactor truck. We brought that to the board previously, and there were some questions on information. We did get some data for those. If you want more information on the different units, I do have it here, if you're interested in looking at it. We did reach out to the vendors, and there's the type of motor, it's a pack car motor that's in this, and that's standard pretty much in these when they put them together. The pricing is based on state contract pricing for the chassis, and then the box is based on source oil pricing, so it's about the level of prices you're going to get. We talked about this in the Environmental Services Committee, about a rotation to rotate these through every two years. And this would be, so if we did this, it would be, we would have a rotation established. And then in the future, we'll get a better resale price on the old ones, and then buy one, so, and we could budget $200,000 a year roughly for new ones moving forward. Any questions?
We're not sure about that, though, Barry. I'm not sure about if we're going to get trade, if these are, if we can trade these in every two years. We're not sure if that's going to work. But we are short a truck right now, and, and we're starting that organics program too. So I, I don't know about trading them in every two years, but...
I just, I just was going to say that time flies. I mean, we've been in this recycle business, I mean, the last, how old is the last truck? I mean, the first truck we got to?
2010.
Yeah, 15 years, it's...
Yeah.
And the backup one is 2012, and it's...
The back, but it was the second one we purchased, that's it.
And that, that one's not doing so well.
Yeah, and that's not, that's...
No, I was just, yeah, time flies. It just seems like yesterday we bought, bought this truck, so...
Mr. Chair, I, I asked Jonah, I said about those plow trucks, because we have our plow trucks in service for about 12 years. They're on a rotation, they put on about 18,000 miles annually. They try to get rid of them at about 225,000 miles and/or 8,000 hours. Our 2021, I mean, that's our usable truck, already has 153,000 miles on it. They put on about, that's about 38,000 a year, and the repairs this year have been about 9,100. It's got 7,500 hours on it. I mean, our 2021 is almost to the point where our plow trucks trade off annually, not in miles, but in hours. Our 2023 has 60,000 miles on it and 4,000 hours already. We're going into organics. I mean, we're going to be running those trucks a lot more. We, at some point, we're not going to have the ability to have a down truck.
Really, really, really can't have one down now.
Well, our 2012 is getting a transmission put in it, isn't it?
There's some work that's being done on it.
So that's not the transmission?
No, it's not a full transmission.
Well...
All right, so do we have?
I'll move to purchase, I'll move to purchase this, a new truck. Go forward with purchasing a new truck for...
Compact.
Compact.
Compact truck.
For, for 372022, is that good for both of you?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I know, I'm not going to, I'm going to support this, but the only way we can reduce costs is not produce so much garbage in recycling. I mean, we should package better as a, as a country and not, not waste so much. I mean, I think that's the only way. I mean, look at the expense recycling has for us. It's, it's not cheap, it's not, it's not free, very costly. I'm not saying you don't do it, I'm saying everyone, and I'm just, I'm probably guiltier than most people, but we should just try not to, try not to have so much garbage or try, ask industry to package better. And I mean, that's, that's just my soapbox for...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, we, these discussions that we have, I mean, we go to the philosophical, high-picture thing, just like you're talking about. But we have to implement too. I'm not, and, and these are some of the costs, we're trying to do more. We're laying out an organics thing, we're, we're trying. We need people to get buy-in, which maybe we might not be getting to next year.
I remember former Administrator Brian Berg talked to an administrator from another county. He was from India, and he asked what, what, how do they resolve all this? He's like, we don't have, we don't have this type of garbage. We, we don't, we reuse, we, I mean, it's a totally different lifestyle, so...
Mr. Chair, we, we were down in Crow Wing County, and they were just, they have a landfill, which we don't. We got a demolition landfill, but we don't have a garbage landfill. They had one, and, you know, they, it'll be available for another 50 years. They were dumping their cardboard and everything in there. I said, do you guys have these recycle stations around the county like we do? I kind of thought everybody did that. They said, no, it's too much work.
It costs too much.
People throwing their garbage in there costs too much. So this weighing out of cost to the taxpayer versus doing the right thing, I mean, these are things we struggle with in our meetings.
And I think we are doing the right thing. For those that you don't know, we are a member of the incinerator in Purim, so our garbage tipping fees are higher than counties that just fill the Fargo landfill or Crow Wing. But those are not, those will not be available in the future. Fargo's already starting to restrict use on theirs, and so we're lucky that we did get involved in it. Of course, this is all paid through by how much costs for garbage, your tipping fees. This is in general tax dollar, this isn't, but it's, you pay through, through your garbage and the assessment on your property taxes, so...
So just so you know, so over there to burn it, to incinerate, it costs about $150 a ton. It's going up a little bit more this year. To take it to Fargo or Grand Forest is $65 a ton. It's a lot cheaper, but the question is, is that the right thing to do?
But then there's transport up there.
Well, transportation, those are some of the big costs.
It's all very, very expensive, no matter how you...
The other, the other thing with the incinerator, once your garbage is burned to that, I mean, it's, it's the most regulated industry in the state, there's no, the risk is done.
Yeah.
We are liable for eternity for every ton of garbage that we bring to any landfill. We're forever liable, so if they have a major deal in the Fargo landfill, we are still responsible for our percentage of garbage hauled there. So we have that risk, so we're...
And with the incinerator, we are using our, like, we're reusing some of the...
Ash, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, yeah, so we, we got, we incinerate, you can reduce what you bring by about 80%. Produces ash, we have an ash recovery facility out closer to New York Mills. We just got a grant to get a big hoop building to store that ash. We can, we're going to use it on two of Becker County roads yes, next year. So, yeah, I mean, but these things all, they, they cost money.
And then they use the steam for...
The steam goes to Baumgarts and Tuffys to power their facilities there, so, yeah.
I've always, always said that if you want to support your local businesses, you can't get much more local than Baumgard cheese. So if you're buying cheese and, and Tuffys to, that benefit us as residents of Becker County because they're buying our steam to, to, so, anyway.
All right, so we, yeah, it is good cheese, I agree it is.
That's where milk is to go. Make that cheese.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion?
You can tell when we're ahead of schedule. Commissioners like to talk.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries. All right, Steve, next item.
The second item is Mincota Power Easement that's going across our property just to the south of our Southwest Campus. Last time we brought that forth, and there were some questions about where it was going to go, a little bit about the mount of the easement. This easement would be going to, parallel to the existing power line, but just to the south of it. It's going to extend 50 feet, 100 feet to the south, parallel to it, so there'd be maybe a little bit of land clearing. This is going to be a much smaller line, it's a single pole. And then once it hits the railroad to the east, it'll go south towards Detroit Lakes along the west side of the railroad tracks, whereas the main power line goes north. I did talk to the individual that was in charge of the easements. He obviously can't make it online because we have computer program, or computer issues. But that's just an average rate that they presented to all the individuals that we're asking for, that they're asking for easements from.
Well, I think the main, main question I had was the rate. I think it's, I think it's a very low rate, but I think it's also parallel another easement that we already have. So it's not, if it was a new easement, I think it would be much different. And then you, then you start looking at it, I don't, it's benefiting, benefiting residents in the area. So I'm not going to, I don't think we should nitpick and try to up that rate for a few thousand. I think it's, I think it's a cheap rate, but I think we can move forward with, in my opinion, move forward with it.
Yeah, and then I know that last, last year in the city, there, some businesses had to come up with plans if the power, if the power was going to be turned off because it was so hot, that there was not enough juice to power everything. One of those just happened to be a dynamic home, because my brother works there, so I know that. And this, I'm assuming will help, in the future, help alleviate that issue. So, yeah, it's needed. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the Mincota Power Easement request?
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Richard, second by Phil. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just note that it's a, that it's the price of $12,240 for the easement.
Yep, is that okay with the? All right, so we have the motion and second, and the price, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Judy, information technology. It's just ironic that you're coming to the board today, but...
How's our internet coming along, Judy?
They're, I just, when I walked in, I, I just heard they're working on the air conditioning, and they're expecting that to be done probably, I think, probably by now about 45 minutes. And once we get the, the room cooled down, then we'll start turning stuff back up. It turns off automatically, so it doesn't ruin things. So that's, that's where we're at on that.
Mr. Chair, Judy, just because this is happening now, do we have a service contract for that? Or how was that, who fixes that?
You know, that's a facilities question or a maintenance question? I don't know the answer to that. That would be more of a Brent question.
Okay.
Okay.
But I will find out for you and let you know.
All right, go ahead, Judy.
So today I'm bringing forth our Office 365 renewal for the end of 2025 through 2026. We signed a three-year contract last year with a company called Liftoff, who we've been using since we started with Office 365. It went up from last year, I think we, if people remember that. And we're now, the amount for this year is $101,672.04. We do use, the majority of our, of our accounts is 325. We use for people that need Word, Excel, and that's about $98,000. And then the rest is people that just need, they don't need all of the apps, so we, we try to kind of skinny it down. Are there any questions on this?
And this is a renewal, so...
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the 365 contract for an amount of $101,672.04.
All right, so a motion by Erica, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry, do we have any more discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Judy.
Mr. Chair, just Judy, and IT is an unsung hero of protecting Becker County, too. I'm sure most of you have heard St. Paul got hit with a, with a big ransom, was it a ransomware? So, and that will devastate a county, so Judy's trying her best to, and there's no guarantees, but I think you're doing a wonderful job protecting us.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Even commissioners are taking tests quite often to try to keep us safe. Some of us are passing them, too.
Mr. Chair, Judy?
Yes.
You know, with this VPN that we're providing, can you explain again? You explained this to me once, but, so we have to have somebody on staff 24 hours a day, right?
We have people on call.
On call.
We do not have people on staff. They work, we work from, well, somebody comes in fairly early, and then we work till about 4:30. It's kind of the normal hours. And then from 4:30 until the next morning, we have somebody on call.
So we are facilitating that for Clearwater County?
Just for... Just for...
Initially facilitating that for, uh, the Sheriff's Department at Becker County.
So, so, so give me an example of how that works. What happens? An officer out in their car, something isn't working or?
Normally, the, the call would come from dispatch, or my, I mean, it could come from an officer. Um, it really depends. Um, I can go through a lot of examples if you'd like me.
Give me a couple of examples, just a couple of the big ones that we can anticipate would happen for $26,000. That's what we're paying for it.
Uh, well, it's, it's not, it's not that, it's that they're paid to be on call. It's not what the event was.
To fix computer problems, right?
About, I, I think one of the ones that sticks in my head is we had something called CrowdStrike. CrowdStrike is a thing that keeps us safe. It is malware. CrowdStrike about a year ago, I think it was July 20th or something, right around there, they'd made a mistake when they sent out an update. It made it so nobody could log in. And by nobody, I don't mean just in Becker County. I mean, throughout, throughout the, throughout the, the nation and the world. Um, so that was one of them. And that took down pretty much the whole country.
So y- you solved that problem or you facilitated?
Uh, we facilitated solving that problem with the help of a vendor, with the help of CrowdStrike, with the help of the state of Minnesota. So there were a number of people working on it. And I think we got that call about midnight, and I think by four or five AM, we had the, we had the way to fix it. But the problem was we had to touch every single PC in the organization. So that's what we spent our time doing. And again, from beginning to end, I suppose it was about a 12-hour iteration from midnight till about noon is when I think we got the majority of the stuff. Yeah, everybody's PCs back up. The first things we did was, was the servers. Then we, we went from there, and those were all done before most people got in. And then we started doing the people as they, uh, you know, as they came in. We'd go to their desks.
Okay, then, then, so like this switching gears, this St. Paul thing?
Uh-huh.
Are we, I mean...
Are we vulnerable? Everybody is vulnerable. Cyber, cybersecurity.
So we're just trying to mitigate whatever
Absolutely.
problems we see out there.
Don't depend on what's going on. Absolutely.
By the time we haven't figured out, they're one step ahead of us.
Absolutely. They, the, the way they use AI is very effective as, it's very effective the way we try to use it too. But it's, 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 there are very bad people out there.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
All right, let's move on to Mr. Piper for EDA.
I just want everybody to know that I went to high school with Cody's dad, so he makes me feel really old.
Well, I hope we don't have any stories on that. Um, morning. Uh, just have resolution 08251H donation from Essential Health, uh, for the board to accept a donation of $5,000 from Essential.
Cody, can you explain a little bit what the donation will be used for?
Sure. Uh, it was stemmed from a prior grant proposal, uh, collaboration with multiple entities, City of Detroit Lakes, Frezey, Project 412, uh, multiple departments here, staff at the county. Um, it was a broader grant proposal, um, countywide. So the intent was that it would score better. Uh, we didn't get that grant, but the funds were earmarked already, uh, kind of as a matching appropriation. Um, and they decided that they wanted to donate it anyway to implement for the uses of that, uh, the purpose of that grant, which was to put amenities, uh, in some designated or pre-identified locations along already in-place bike infrastructure throughout the county. So kind of like primary, um, travel routes for alternative transportation and stuff like that. But we already have some locations picked out in, uh, pre-discussion with these, uh, the other entities and cities and stuff. So this will just be used to, um, essentially appropriate to each of the entities. And then, um, you know, depending on if there's any changes to the, the cost and stuff like that, it would be the response of each entity to pick up the, the extra. But...
So, so, but Cody, tell me if I'm wrong here. Um, each entity will receive $1,000. Sorry?
Yeah, that was the intent, was to just, we had five locations that were identified, and we just split it up evenly.
All right. Do we have a motion? I'll move to approve Resolution 8 dash 251H.
All right, so motion.
$5,000.
Motion by Phil, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric, do we have any more discussion?
Just a thank you to Essential Health
Yeah.
For, um, for donating this to help our community.
Yeah, that is a big, big thank you. All right, so motion, second, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff Glander is the next contestant. And we also have a special guest from the jail.
I don't feel like a contestant.
We'll see if the price is right.
Yeah, well, I'll try to explain it. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have two items today. The first one is Resolution 08251F. It's a personnel request for two full-time corrections officers. And why there is a need for that is we have a pool of part-time positions with, uh, funds that are not getting used. They're variable hour positions. And, uh, as of yesterday, when I printed this out, our budget for 2025 for part-time, uh, corrections officers is $562,229. Uh, as of date, uh, and we may be, I don't know if it's accurate as of yesterday, but, uh, we've used $205,786.15 or 37% of that out of 67% for the year. So we would like to move funds to the full-time line item and hire two full-time corrections officers to, uh, which are much needed, um, in place of the, uh, I shouldn't say in place of the part-time, but just to use those, those funds. Uh, currently, we have a minimum of six positions or six, uh, six staff members that have to be on duty at all times. When somebody is sick, we have to, we can't just operate with five or four. We need somebody on staff.
My one is brought to committee, Mr. Chair. Um, we discussed, this is all within budget. It's transferring the same dollar amount from hard time over to full time because we can't, um, and there's a lot of the, some of the full-time people that are on staff aren't putting in hours. They're not available and, and, uh...
Part-time.
I mean, the part-time. And then I'm thinking that some of the overtime deduct will be reduced for
Reduced a lot, yeah.
For this too, because we're at very, full-time, we're at minimum staff. So to just have a couple, I don't know if you call them floating or, or not, but, um, they're, um, we just, I just think it's, if, if you can't, if you have, are having trouble filling those with part-time
Mm-hmm.
And you're on, and it's within your budget, if that's the way we can go, that's the way it should go.
Yeah.
It's within, it's, it's within, I said, if it's still within your
Budget.
Budget, if you just transfer those dollars, then I'm fine with doing that.
And then also too, the, anytime someone fills in that's a full-time person, because we're at minimal staff, that's all overtime for them.
It is.
The whole ship. So that's a, and I think your overtime budget is already above, isn't it, budgeted?
Yeah, well, we, according to this, uh, we've used half.
Oh, used half, okay.
We're about on pace, and, but it's typical that our overtime budget is higher than it should be.
Yeah, it will be higher, yeah. And then that should be able, that we should be able to save there too, so.
Yeah, that, the overtime budget will, will definitely be reduced. And this has been talked, well, thank you for having a special guest me here today. But, uh, yeah, this, this, this budget has, or this overtime budget has been, been an issue for a long time. But, uh, like Sheriff had, had mentioned, we can't go below certain number of staff. And, um, what, what really gets us and, um, what makes it hard is trying to fill any sick or vacation or anything like that. Um, and I would say probably within the last eight to 10 years, there's been a, a shift in our part-time worker that's available. Uh, I would say, I believe all of our part-time staff minus one or, or two that are, are looking for, um, for their lawn, for some careers and stuff, are, uh, working full-time jobs. Uh, I would say 10 years ago, we had a lot of part-time people that were coming in trying to get a full-time job and just not seeing that, that anymore. So I would say we've been vastly under, under our budget for part-time, uh, for, uh, we did a couple of year look back, but it's, it's been probably 10 years that we've been under budget.
So for, just, just for clarification, so we have the budget in our current budget from part-time for the remainder of the year.
Correct.
And our goal moving forward to, to fund these is to, to transfer what is, would have been budgeted for part-time
Correct.
And put that into full-time. So we're not budgeting any more money. We're just shifting
Exactly.
it through. Okay.
Yeah.
And I think also, uh, cost savings for this as well. You have a roster of part-time people that we are funding, training, those kinds of things.
Uniforms.
And, and uniforms, um, access to UKG, all those types of things. So really looking at, you know, minimal hour standard or reducing of that pool.
Through attrition.
Through attrition, yes.
I just want to reiterate, we do have some very good employees that do work in those positions.
Yes.
But just a lot of times, they're not available because of their other commitments.
Yep.
All right. So I will make a motion to approve 1F. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by me, second by Barry. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two is a request for a mobile radio for a squad through Motorola. This is on the state contract, and the price is $6,405.12. And this is in our budget.
And we question this too, and, um, we are, we are in the lower, this is not the newest technology either.
No, it's not.
Sheriff Glander explained to us that the new technology is even more expensive, but we're trying to, a little bit. So I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a radio.
Right, we have a motion by Barry, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric, uh, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Glander, Sheriff Glander, uh, WeFest, prep for WeFest, is everything going okay out there?
We, we moved in yesterday.
I see campers also moved in?
Campers are moving in as we speak, yes. Um, we have our command post there, uh, our emergency trailer, and we will be on-site full-time tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM.
Well, good luck.
We're not leaving the county alone. Uh, we do have, you know, people assigned to the county as well. Uh, but yes, we will be out there until at least noon on Sunday, if not later.
And everything is streamlined, everything's going well?
Yep.
As good as the plan. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you, Chris and Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will take a break.
Thanks, Chris.
Until 10:00 AM. Until 10:00 a.m.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I, I think this is definitely, I think we all agree this is commercial property. The concern that been in the past is we don't have very good rules regarding, example, parking. And I think we're addressing that at the county. So I was, I was kind of curious, could we, if we approve this today, can we, can we ask that they are following our new requirements for parking for businesses? Because I've run into problems in my district before with, with businesses that change uses, and now all of a sudden, the parking is a big problem. So that's, that's where, I think initially too, that's where the concern was, because we don't, means we don't know what businesses are coming in. There's going to be different parking requirements depending on the type of business. But this is commercial property, I, I don't have a problem with that, but that's where my concern is for future use. But you're off highway, I, you know, I think people will, I mean, you're not like a spot one here. This is that whole, it's a pretty big area you're looking at, so you're going to have to, but that's my concern is future parking issues. I don't know how you, you address that, if.
Mr. Chair, until we get to our parking ordinances or whatever, could we table this? Are you guys looking to get going quickly here?
Yeah, I think, I think before, they, they'll have to go back through the plating process, which will take a little bit of time, and then obviously, winter will fall upon us. I think all of those parking requirements will be in place prior to any, you wouldn't have any construction until 2026, I'm guessing.
Can we just, if we make the motion to approve contingent, this will follow our new parking requirements for, for commercial? I mean, we want to mimic reasonable, I mean, we're just looking at reasonable requirements.
Yeah, reasonable.
Maybe mirror what the city has, I don't even know, but, and again, I'm sure your businesses, you know, will have the adequate parking they need. It's just, it's just that something that, it's the concern that was initially brought on this development is, how do we regulate parking on specific businesses? And that would be my, my concern. So you, it's multiple businesses going to be in there eventually, you, I'm assuming.
That would be the plan, yeah.
And, but since it's on the high, highway, they would have to, on Highway 10, don't they have to get like Frontage Road, work with M.D.O.T.
Well, you gotta put in a turn lane, right?
We, we paid a hundred grand to put in a turn.
Yeah, it's a turn lane now.
Okay, got it.
Then we built a road, you know, that for access to the law on the property.
Okay.
So is that a motion?
Well, I would, I just, Mr. Chair, just to be fair, I don't know that you could make something contingent on a change of zone like you.
That they don't know what it is yet.
But, like I said, again, I think those parking requirements can be in place prior to these businesses coming in, and they would have to follow that.
Sure.
I, that's, I'm, I'm fine with it. I think this one's a little bit different too, because you're not going to be parking on U.S. Highway 10. I mean, that you're, you're, overflow parking will be within that whole area. It's not, it might not be good, and we might get complaints and, you know, but.
Mr. Chair, so Kyle, if I understand you right, what we're deciding is switching from agricultural to commercial use.
Yes.
They'll still have to come back with a plat for what the businesses are, and then.
No, no, so they'll, the plat will go to Audubon Township, and it's been there once.
Okay.
But there was a little miscommunication, so in December of '22, this change of zone was before this board. It takes a four-fifths majority to change a zone, and that was a three-two vote. It went to Audubon not knowing that, then now it'll have to go back and everything, but, so the township has that subdivision control. It's one of the six, so this plat will go there immediately, well, not maybe immediately, but pretty close to following.
And I think our comp plan shows that this commercial area, it's just that the, you know, there are those concerns that should be mon, you know, there's a couple, and I don't even know what anything else would be, but parking is one that's a concern, but I think you're, you're within yourself, I mean, it's.
And it's a new business, it's not a old business that's changing.
Right, but it would be the second business that took over a building that would fall under poor parking if it changed use. If, once it's commercial, it can do, you know, a lot more things, you know. What happened to us was an office space turned into a restaurant. Well, the office space requirement parking was four, and now the restaurant is forty. You know, I mean, it's, that's where the big change would be.
Mr. Chair, Kyle, how do we, how can we do this, if we pass this today, how, how do we do that?
Well, again, I mean, I would, I don't think you're going to have any construction complete until 2026, and we would have that updated by then, so.
So for today, it's just a motion to change the zone from agriculture to commercial?
That's it, yeah.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
So a motion by Eric and a second by Richard, do we have any more discussion?
I, Mr. Chair, I, I think this area right on Highway 10 is, and it's got commercial use right next to it. I think it's a, a very appropriate place for commercial property, so.
And the mayor from, of Audubon came to the planning commission and spoke in favor and, and really hoped that we would pass this, so.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Phil.
Second item from July 30th, Joyce Olmang requesting after the fact conditional use permit for day and overnight parking during WeFest, a recommendation to approve with the condition that they follow the county traffic plan in place between the sheriff, highway department, township, and county, or WeFest themselves, which is subject to change depending.
How is this after the fact, when WeFest starts tomorrow?
Well, they've been doing it for a few years.
Oh, okay. Motion approved.
Second.
Concur with planning.
All right, we have a motion by Barry and a second by Phil, do we have any other discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I didn't think that was necessary either, but it got in there, so I just read it verbatim.
Are we done?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're done, yeah, all right. We're done, really.
Last item, old business from May 28, 2025, is Prairie Lake Investments LLC requesting a conditional use permit for mining operations. Mr. Chair, are you going to, are you going to take testimony or?
Yeah, so we have some people that deferred from the open forum. Is there going to be, is there anybody that is going to speak, Kyle, on behalf of most people? You, okay, so is there anybody else that would like to also speak? Even though the attorney is, is going to speak, okay. All right, so which, which would you prefer to do first?
Makes no difference.
Let's get, let's get the.
Do you want, do you want applicants first?
I would like the applicants first, yes.
Those in favor and not?
Yeah. And then, then after the applicants are done, we'll, we'll take the people, the regular people, then, then we'll take the attorney. Is that okay?
Yeah. One more than one of you?
What's that?
One more than one of you, I can move.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members.
Good morning, Matt.
Just here on behalf of Prairie Lake Investments LLC.
Matt, I don't think they can.
Yeah, state your name, Matt, and your address.
Matt Headstrom, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota. So again, I'm here on behalf of Prairie Lake Estates LLC for the mining and gravel pit operation on Highmark Avenue. I want to tell you how this project started, okay? I was playing pickleball one day at our Detroit Lakes Community Center, and Dale Tweed, who had just recently lost his wife to cancer, had leaned over to me and said, "Matt, would you like to buy a farm?" And I said, "Absolutely, sure, Dale," just kiddingly. And then I said, "How much?" And he told me the price. I said, "Dale, thank you very much, but no, I'm retired, but I don't want to do that." A week later, I was talking to my son about it, who's been looking for a house for three years, and told him, it's a friend from Pickleball wanted to sell his farm, a hundred acres off Highmark Avenue. He goes, "Dad, we should go take a look at it." Sunday afternoon, we took a drive, he just happened to be in the driveway, his garage door open, went and talked to him. He showed my son the house, gave him the whole tour, and my son fell in love with the house. We left the property, and he goes, "Dad, I really like that." I said, "Oh, no, I was in trouble." But he also mentioned this to another friend of mine that was at Pickleball, Nick Bowers, because there's no way I could do this on my own. And Nick goes, "Matt, if we sell this house to your son and ten acres, and we have nine acres left over, we could potentially do something with that." So then the wheel started turning, I went back, met with the seller, and he was, agreed that he had a price, and we offered him that price. We went and we bought the property, not knowing what I'd be sitting here today with all these people back there staring at the back of my head. Because I want to read to you what, basically what I've gone through, okay? These are some text messages that were sent to the seller of the property, who had recently lost his wife to cancer. Says, "Hi, Dale," that's something I want to read first, this is the one I want to read first. It says, "Just so you know, the tally of your mistake has personal and financial cost," I think he meant cost, "close to $10,000 thus far. Not to mention the loss of sleep among the stress on all of us, my biggest question is why did you come to my place and lie to my face? You knew better. I told you many times that Dad and myself could show you how to develop your land. You left over a million dollars on the table for two shitheads to scarf up and turn into something that Sue would absolutely oppose to. Sue is the deceased wife." Another one, "Sorry, but I gotta ask, man to man, and please be honest, do you feel like you got betrayed by Bowers, or do you know just how bad you screwed all of us? Second question, when the class action suit starts, would you testify that you were misled and taken advantage of? Had to ask both, just upfront with you. I have contacted Minnesota State Ethics Board and have demanded an investigation into Bowers and all constituents on the board, and have already forwarded all information about this situation. Yes, there will be consequences for dirty actions. Myers would have paid the same or more even before you were final. Sorry, but I feel an explanation is deserved. I'm out $300,000, and my daughter lost her future and life inheritance. I don't receive a copy by noon, that'll say it all. Wish you the best, friend." Another neighbor, "Hi, Dale, Jeff and I have been meeting, we're surrounding neighbors discussing proposed gravel mining. We would like to know if you'd be willing to write a letter that would forward to the county commissioners for, that would like, for the June 17 meeting, if you're misled or feel like you're going to happen, to happen against your, this was going to happen against your wishes. Also stating that you did get an offer from someone else who wanted to mine gravel, and you turned them down. We would very much appreciate your input and help fight this, but we understand if you decline." Here's the seller's response. "I am not writing a letter. I was not misled by anyone regarding the use of the land. I did not turn another buyer down due to their proposed use of the land. The people who purchased this land are good, honest people, and will do their best to honor the property, and I support them in their endeavors. I wish you well." The seller. So this is what I have been going through since May. It has not been fun. I'm not a developer. I don't write awesome applications for gravel pit operations. I didn't even know this was gravel pit operations until the county said it was a mining and gravel pit. All I want to do is develop 90 acres of land into 31 two-and-a-half acre lots. Unfortunately, 20 acres of this land isn't buildable, and we can't put a township road on it with the elevations that are there. So we hired a surveying company, we hired an engineering company to come out and tell us what we need to do. We're trying to do everything right here. We're not trying to pull anything over somebody's eyes. So the engineering company says that you, you need to remove what 250,000 cubic yards of gravel to make those lots buildable and put a township road on there that's going to be maintained by the township to their specs. We, we got ahold of water and soil, had them come out, because there was a chance that there was wetlands out there. They were out there twice to double check. There was no wetlands there, okay? And I, I'm not the expert, I'm just saying what they told us, okay? They were at both tech panels, I've gone to three planning and zoning meetings, two tech panel meetings, and this is my second meeting here. And we also met with the Lake Unit Township. And they, they approved this project, nobody was concerned about it, okay? But as this has gone down the road, things have happened. People have gone door-to-door, starting rumors. I'm here to tell you, this isn't an active gravel pit. This isn't a 20-year gravel pit. This is land that needs to be leveled down so we can develop it, so we could have 31 lots where residents could build homes in Becker County. I wish I was here proposing to you a 36-unit apartment building, because that would probably fly right through. But this is just a 31, two-and-a-half acre lot development. It's not a gravel pit.
Please don't comment if you're not speaking upfront, please.
So it's my understanding is if you want to take gravel off of this property, you need a conditional use permit, correct? To sell it, yes, to sell it. So all we're trying to do is, is follow all the steps. We got the condition use permit, we went to Becker County Soil and Water, we went to the township, and we, we hired a survey company, we hired these companies to do the work for us so we can do this in Becker County. And I think all of you got this one too, is this familiar at all? It probably got emailed to you just a couple of days ago. No idea who the individual is, but I can read from this, because he mentions one name in there, which is the neighbors on, on the most northern end of it. Probably, I don't know, he's a friend, I'm making assumptions here, and I probably shouldn't make assumptions. But I, I've sat through all these meetings and, and just been, been beat up, basically, for trying to develop some land in Becker County. And I, I'm just here to say that I appreciate your time, and I know that you've guys have heard a lot of stuff about this, and I just appreciate what you do. And last but not least, I do have a here, a land alteration permit for Becker County. So the issue right here is not about this huge project, and the scope of this project is not huge. It's not, it's, it's not a stratos gravel pit. It's two local guys trying to develop some land, and unfortunately, one part of it is not developed what in the state it is. But we're willing to work, hey, I've met with the neighbors, okay? I've met the two closest neighbors. I've been in both their houses and talked to them, and I, I don't know what else, you know, else I could do, but I've probably taken up most of your time, but I did want to mention two names that I met with. And I spent about a half hour in their place, Dean Miller and Sue Spitzer, okay? They are the one closest to this project, other than my son, who's on the other side, who's closest. And I had a very, very nice visit with them, they're very nice, kind people. And the last thing I want to do is interrupt their lives, and I told them that. This isn't going to be an active gravel pit. As soon as we can get this gravel out of there, so we can do the reclamation, we're done. It's done, okay? And the sooner we can do that, the better. And, and I think they were relieved to hear that. My only regret is I didn't go to them right away before this whole project started. So I just want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate you, appreciate you.
Thank you, Matt. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the proposed operation? Okay. So, yes?
I would just suggest, I'm Tammy Norgard, Vogel Law Firm.
Would you like to go ahead of them? Okay, sure, please go ahead, please go ahead, yeah.
Because otherwise, some people might wonder what I'm going to say, and then might decide, well, I better get up there just in case she doesn't say that. And this might just kind of tighten things up, if you don't mind. Okay, I'm Tammy Norgard, Vogel Law Firm, and I'm speaking on behalf of a number of people. And just to avoid having a bunch of people coming up here, I would just ask for a moment if people that are opposed to the CUP could just stand to at least show you who is opposed to this conditional use permit. All right, thank you very much. I was a little surprised, I mean, this morning, but also when we were here on July 15 about the EAW, to hear the developers say, well, this is kind of a personal attack, and somebody's just jealous that they didn't get the right to develop this property. But you can see these people that are here in your commission room today, and these aren't people that are jealous about somebody getting to develop some property, or getting a favorable treatment, or getting a jump on anybody else. These are, there was four, over 400 people that signed the petition for an EAW that have concerns about this project. And I think you have to take that seriously. There's a number of people here that are saying, this is not the appropriate place for a active gravel mine or crushing facility. What we have here is, you heard emotional emails from people. This isn't a decision you should be making on emotions. You're the county board, you have county ordinances, your job is to determine siting, safety, and to make sure nobody's creating a nuisance for their neighbors. One of the other things that the developers said on July 15 and today is saying, hey, this is just two local guys, we're not, you know, we're not developers, we're not in the gravel mining industry. And frankly, that's what my clients are concerned about, is that they are, they're asking you to just, hey, just let us open a gravel mine, let's do some crushing, we've never done this before, we don't have experience in this, but don't worry about the neighbors that live 100 feet away and 200 feet away. Their residences are 100 and 200 feet away from the property line. And the concern here is, given the lack of professionalism in the submissions that you've received, that don't comply with Becker County ordinances, that, you know, and I don't dispute that these are great people, and that they're great community-minded people, and yet they're not experienced developers by their own admission. And so that is the concern with my clients. You're being asked to set an industrial facility in the middle of a neighborhood. And like I said before, when I was here in July, you're setting a precedent, and you have to treat similarly situated people similarly. And so the next time you have somebody saying, oh, I've got this kind of industrial use, right next door to some neighbors, there's 11 lots that are adjacent to this 90-acre parcel, there's three residential subdivisions that are right in this area, and there's houses right next door, there's vacant lots that are being offered for sale for, you know, rural residential, summer homes, just rural homes for people that want, that don't want to live in the city. And so the question is, is this the appropriate location to have a mining operation? And I think it's kind of interesting that the developer got up here and said, oh, this isn't an active mine, don't worry about it, it's nothing. Well, read the application. The application says, five years, 700,000 cubic yards of gravel out of this facility, mining and crushing. They have, they've now said in the finding of fact that they've suggested that that could be 350, based on the planning commission's recommendation, but the application itself was 700,000. And so, I mean, that's where, when you hear somebody here say, oh, it's not really a gravel mine, don't worry about it, it's nothing like that, that's not true. And, you know, your job is to look at, you know, your ordinances, did they comply? And is this the appropriate place to have this? Now, if this were just a development, and I think this is an option you have, you know, maybe this should just be a development. And if they're going to clear that site, take, clear it off, take the rock out, and go crush it in an appropriate place where there is aggregate crushing operations. You know, they could, if they have a connection with an active gravel mine, they could haul that off and go crush it and sell it. And this is the biggest concern, or one of the biggest concerns of my clients, is we don't want a gravel crushing operation in the neighborhood.
Can I just stop you right there, just because I want clarification on what you just said? Is what she said true? If they, without a gravel mine permit, can they remove the gravel, crush it, and sell it?
It would still be a sale of the material there, so that would be...
It would have to be a conditional on a, it would have to be a stipulation on the conditional use permit.
That's what I thought, thank you.
So our first position, our first position is to deny the CUP. The second position is, if you're going to grant it, you should require, take the rock off and take it off-site, because these neighbors don't need a gravel crushing operation 100 or 200 feet from their homes. Because that is very detrimental, there's a lot more noise, there's vibration, there's dust. A lot of these problems that we're concerned about would be minimized, or just not as significant if, in fact, we can have the gravel crushing somewhere else. I mentioned in July, and you didn't want to talk too much about the application, but this is an inadequate application. I think the operational plan, honestly, is the worst operational plan I've ever seen. Your statute, your ordinance says that they have to submit a mining operational plan, and we have a one-page document, and there's a number of things that they're supposed to identify as part of their operational plan. And they're supposed to inventory the material, and that's where it's, you know, it's the 700,000, and that's where that number came in. Timetable, staging, oh, just up to five years, probably five years. Topsoil management plans. Their response is, we're just going to trip the, or strip the topsoil and put it to the side. Okay, they're supposed to submit a plan, a topsoil management plan, and it's a sentence, we're just going to strip it and put it to the side. There's supposed to be an erosion control plan, which is very concerning for the neighbors, right? You're dealing with erosion issues, stability issues, if this is a hill that's going to be taken down, what impact is that going to be having on drainage or stability of the neighbors? So they're supposed to submit a plan with this. And their response is, we'll submit a stormwater plan to the MPCA. That doesn't address erosion control, and it doesn't address stability concerns. And this is something that has a direct impact on the neighbors. It says they're supposed to submit, your ordinance tells them they must submit a screening plan. And their screening plan is simply, well, the topography hides it, and we'll pile some materials up. And so they just want to dig out some materials and pile it up around there and call that a screening plan. And that's going to take care of silt, and dust, and noise, and vibration, and screen the activity in this neighborhood that's 100 feet from homes. What are you going to do about noise? They're supposed to submit a plan for noise. And they just said setbacks, the topography, and the hours of operation will keep the noise from being at concern. The dust, the plan for dust, they just said, oh, we'll put some, we'll put some material on the roads. They didn't even get it. They didn't get that there's a concern about dust coming from gravel crushing operations when you're in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Again, these are the types of things that concern my clients that live around the area. And so this is not an operational plan. This is, some of these aren't even full sentences, it's just a few words after these topics, and it's just insufficient. Another thing they had failed to submit is a restoration plan, a remediation plan, and that just came in yesterday. So I'm sure most of my clients haven't even had the opportunity to look at that, or see how they feel about that restoration plan. I think what this should tell you is there's a lack of professionalism, there's a lack of experience, there's a minimal effort to comply with your ordinances. That should concern you, that should be a red flag, if they're not really even going to try hard to comply with your ordinances. And my neighborhood residents and people in the area have significant concerns about health concerns. This is pristine lake country. They're concerned about, concerned about additional traffic on the roads, they're concerned about wetlands, groundwater recharge, some drainage issues, health concerns. The staging plan, just nonexistent, and that's something they're required to be putting in. Okay, so as a whole, I think the submission that you're asked to review is, it simply doesn't meet your standards. And you, as a county board, have an ordinance for a reason. You should require people to submit what the ordinance requires, otherwise it's deficient. And I think you should deny it and have them come back with a more full, robust plan, if in fact, they really want to move forward with a gravel mining operation. And based on their comments, that this isn't really a gravel mine, well, maybe they shouldn't be developing a gravel mine then, or asking for a permit. In your ordinance, it requires you to make a finding that this CUP is not going to harm the use and enjoyment of other property owners in the vicinity. That's the standard, that you have to say, this will not harm other people in the vicinity. And I think it's interesting, when you look at what the planning commission did, the planning commission heard testimony, and they looked at it, and they basically tacitly acknowledged that there's, it's going to cause a problem. And so what they said is, you know what, to minimize this problem, we're not going to let them do anything during the summer months. They're not going to be able to do the crushing operation during the summer months. And so they're acknowledging, yes, this is a nuisance, this is a problem, but we're just going to limit the months that you can do it. And those are two diametrically opposed positions. And when your statute, your ordinance says you cannot issue a CUP if it's going to adversely affect the use and enjoyment of the neighbors' properties, so I'm saying that you don't have another option but to deny this conditional use permit. Similarly, you have to make a finding that it's not going to diminish the value of the properties in the area. And there's lots for sale out there for development. And if there's going to be a, you know, active gravel mine next door for five years, I can't imagine anyone's going to say, great, that's the perfect lot, this is Nirvana, I want to buy that lot and develop a beautiful rural residence on that lot, when it's going to be an active mining facility for five years. So I do think it absolutely affects the ability for the adjacent landowners to develop their property in the way that they're already permitted to develop their property in this area. Another thing that you have to find is that it won't impact the, or it won't impede the development of adjacent properties, or vacant land to develop for rural residences. And again, that's just my comment, in both the valuation of the property and the lack of being able to develop it. I think both of those things are impacted, and I don't see how you can say they're not. And I think that that mandates a decision that this CUP has to be denied. The county has to make a finding that adequate measures have been taken to address odor, dust, noise, vibration. So you have to make that finding. And you had an expert panel that convened, and some of you were at that expert panel, and your experts were saying, yeah, there's probably some problems here that should be looked at a little bit further. And I recognize and appreciate that you had the three to two vote on the EAW, but you've had experts tell you that there were concerns here, and yet you, as a county board, have to make a finding that there's adequate assurances here, and adequate measures are going to be taken, so that you're not going to have dust, you're not going to have noise issues. And this is what your operating plan says, is not even a sentence on a lot of those topics. For pollution control, they just, all they say is, well, we'll work with the MPCA and get that figured out. And that's, that's not, that's not appropriate. It's just measures to avoid and prevent pollution will be established with the MPCA. That doesn't say anything, you know? So they didn't come to you with anything. And then they're asking you to make this finding that you have to make, and you have to make the finding in order to pass this, that adequate measures address any problems with dust, and noise, and vibration. And that's where I think that you can't make that decision, it will be arbitrary if you make that decision. So I, and at this point, I want to make a point of something that came up in the July 15 hearing, and I raise it because I feel compelled to raise it, and that is, Commissioner Varberg mentioned, he said that, that this is, that there's a lack of gravel mines in the county that don't sell to Fargo, that there's a lot of them that sell to Fargo, and that he personally will be able to get a better deal coming to a gravel mine like this. And so basically, admitting that there's a financial advantage to him if this gets permitted. And when something like that is said and admitted on the record, and it was on tape, I think that that's a personal pecuniary interest, where a commissioner should abstain from voting on something that's going to affect them financially. And so I'm just, I'm just raising that, I have to raise it.
I want, I want something else on the record, they're going to be making Class 5 there. I bought, I've bought so little, I was making a comment about people in my business, but I do not buy Class 5. I bought two loads of Class 5 this year. I didn't buy any Class 5 for the last four or five years. I am a septic installer, I use clean washed sand, I use rock, crushed rock, and I use black dirt. And I can prove to you that I don't buy Class 5. Once in a while, I'll buy a couple loads of it. I do not sit here and look for ways for me to benefit from this position. So, and I can, everybody who knows what I do for a living knows I use washed sand, crushed rock, and black dirt, and there isn't any of that for sale there, because what I do is septic systems. So.
And I wasn't making an accusation, I was just basing that the comments that you made, you raised, you said there'd be, that your business relying on this would be a financial advantage, and if you're buying Class 5 and they're selling Class 5.
No, I didn't say it's a financial advantage for my business. It will not be a financial advantage for my business, because I don't use that. And everybody in the county that knows me knows I do septic systems, and you do not put Class 5 in septic systems. But there will be advantages for everybody down there who's using, who's building new homes, the townships will have advantages, the county will have advantages, because there is, they don't offer, a lot of that material is not offered to them, and it will be now. But I have plenty of proof that I don't use Class, enough Class 5 to benefit at all from this.
So I think on behalf of my clients, I would ask you to deny this conditional use permit. If you do approve this conditional use permit, I have a number of suggestions of what should be on the conditional use permit as requirements and conditions. The first one is that any material should, that's being removed, should be removed and brought elsewhere immediately and not crushed on-site, because this is not a location. Okay, development is fine, right? Development into a rural residential subdivision is consistent with what that area is being used for. It's not consistent to have a crush, a mining and crushing operation for five years in this, in this area. And this isn't something, if they need to remove material in order to put the road in, they can remove material and put the road in. Some fall and not adversely affect their neighbors for up to five years while they're slowly mining and crushing on that facility. So I would say, the condition number one should be that there's no crushing, no mining and no crushing. They can remove the material and take it off-site if they choose to sell the material. I think that they should be required to have a detailed operational plan and a staging plan that are approved by the county board, because that hasn't been submitted to you yet. I think that they need to have a reclamation bond, and I think that's something your planning commission also recommended. I think there has to be a wetland characterization. There needs to be a stormwater plan, of course, that's approved. I would say there should be no explosives used on-site, there should be no vibration, there should be no smoke emissions that are darker than a number two on the Power's micro regulation chart, so that would make sure that it's not getting undue visual pollution. No fly ash, no dust, no fumes. They should prepare and have approved a fugitive dust plan. There should be no waste disposed of on-site, there should be no tree piles left on-site. You need a road maintenance agreement with the county and the township for any roads that are impacted. There should be no backup alarms, they should have the white noise backup alarms, because they're operating in a residential area.
What is that? I've never heard of those.
They have, so that you don't have the really loud, you know, screeching when you're going backwards, there's like a white, it's like a low pitch frequency.
Vehicle?
Yeah, well, it's just kind of, yeah, it's a kind of a loud, it sounds like white noise. So it's something...
That doesn't have noise there, so...
Right.
There's a noise that comes on.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that was acceptable by OSHA.
I didn't think that was either, is it? Is that acceptable?
I have no idea what the standards are. I always propose is that the backup alarm...
Yeah.
Well, and I'm sure that the loud backup alarms would be in compliance with MSHA, but I'd be asking for, you know, any kind of lower, lower pitch or white noise backup alarms, if possible.
The reason I ask, because I've asked that in different, and that's, you have to have backup alarms, I mean...
But the different kinds, yeah, not the screeching high pitch necessarily.
I didn't realize.
I mean, it's part of the reason that this doesn't belong in the middle of a neighborhood, right? Next to two homes 100 feet away and 200 feet away is operating an industrial facility that has constant backup alarms going off. It just kind of, it underscores the point. Also, they should have a noxious weed control plan and follow the law on noxious weed control. Also, they should have a noxious weed control plan and follow the law on noxious weed control. They should be restricted on how many semi trucks are entering and exiting the facility per day. They should be required to safeguard the neighboring properties if they're taking a hill down with regard to slope and setbacks from the neighboring properties because you don't want them to be mining in their area and end up having part of the neighbor's property fall in or have erosion concerns. So those are significant issues. Also, there should be fencing because this is in the middle of a neighborhood. Again, you can have little kids. What little kid wouldn't want to go play in a gravel pit? And so there should be fencing to make sure that the children in the neighborhood are You should have a restriction that says no material can be brought on-site. So if you were to allow any crushing on-site, no material from anywhere else should be brought in to be crushed on-site. I think five years is unrealistic if the, if the developer's saying, oh, I'm just doing a development. Don't worry, it's not really a gravel pit. Why would they need five years? I think, you know, two years at most to get that material off and out of there. There, you know, if they're truly going to be developing a housing division and getting a road in there, you'd think it would be in their advantage to get the material out, get the road in and get it on the market. I would ask you to limit the hours. I think eight to five would be sufficient for, for any activity on-site. There's a lot of concerns about Jake breaks in the neighborhood if you're suddenly adding a lot of trucks. So we would ask that there be no Jake breaks. And to the extent there are violations, side suggests first violation is a $500 fine, second violation, $1,000 fine. Third violation for anybody entering or exiting this facility, I would say it cancels the conditional use permit. For the reclamation plan, I'd ask that the reclamation is done within one month because again, this should, if this is truly just being done in order to develop, it should be, you know, clear out the material that's needed, put the road in, and have the remediation done within 30 days of the end of the actual material removal. And that's all I've got. Are there any questions?
One thing you said, not bringing material in.
Right.
Is that specific for, like, I don't, I-
Sure.
Can you clarify that?
Certainly. Yep. So like what I'm asking for is if you do have a conditional use permit, and if they're out there excavating big chunks of rock that they have to remove from the site, they will have to put that in a, you know, trailer and, or some kind of a big-
To remove that.
To remove it, move it and take it elsewhere to crush.
Yep.
And what I'm saying is if you allowed them to crush on-site, don't let them bring in trucks of big material to come in and say, oh, we got the crusher set up right there anyway, so let's just bring in this other material and crush it.
So you're saying if we were to allow crushing-
Right, right.
No bringing-
Right. Any other material in.
Okay.
But my, our first position is please do not allow them to crush on-site because this is in the middle of a neighborhood. It's not where you should have gravel crushing operations.
Is all, is, is the material, do you need clay to make this class five? Do you need any other material?
Mr. Chair, maybe if we want to have those discussions, we can open acid.
Well, I want to make sure we have it.
We want to name and, and-
Yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait till Tammy's done, then we'll have you come up. If that, if that works. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come up and then state your name and what your, why you're here.
Sorry, Sonnenberg, Sonnenberg Excavating.
Do you need to add material to make class five? Have you-
From, from the drill logs, and they're very minimal at this point, there is clay on-site, so we do not need it.
All right. That was my question.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anybody else, for Mr. Sonnenberg?
So, so if we were to say no crushing, how would that affect your-
Greatly.
Plan? How?
In order to make the class five and stuff we want to make, it has to be crushed. In order to haul it off-site, it makes it monetarily not sellable. And crush it somewhere else.
And you're talking crushing for two weeks a year?
Yes. Right now, right now, your permit states that we have to be crushed. We have to be done before Memorial Day or, and we can start after Labor Day. Am I right on that?
Yes.
Yes. So we would have to do it before. I can't estimate, you know, estimation would be two weeks. I can't, you know, say it wouldn't go a little over or a little less, but we would do it in the times that your permit said, yes. So.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I might after-
Yeah, I was saying I might have more too.
I'm good.
Yeah.
For the record, would you state your address too?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
48990 County Highway 17, Vergis, Minnesota.
That's just for Peggy.
Yeah, it's just for Peggy.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I would, I would entertain anybody that would like to speak opposed, oppose the gravel pit. Also, if you're, if your comments have already been stated, please don't restate them. And then try to limit your time as much as possible. And I know we haven't limited anybody else's, but if there's a lot of you. So is there anybody that would like to come up? And then when you come up, please state your name and your, and your address, and then go ahead.
Hello there, I'm, I'm Jim Coleman. I live at 11128 Dakota Beach Road. It's out on Lake Melissa. We've been there for 81 years, and we've appreciated everything this board has done to make our life out there so wonderful. My dad built a cabin out there in 1922. It's still there, still looks good. We've enjoyed every minute of living here. And again, I say we appreciate everything you've done to improve that. However, over the last 10 years, our environmental has become worse and worse, many times due to the smoke from the fires, all the traffic, all the windfest, all these great innovations that make it harder and harder for us to breathe. I'm at the point where I have a very tough time speaking. My wife, who was an RN for 35 years, worked in the respiratory area, and she is very, very concerned about this motion she had to leave today. So we would like to just really, I'm concerned about the position that these folks have, but I'm even more concerned about my position is the way you folks are going along on this just isn't the right direction. You need to take a hard look at this and say, what is in the best interest of our people? Our people that live here, not necessarily our developers and the area. And yes, there's many, many areas that they could get gravel from. It doesn't have to be right next door to my house, Phil. It doesn't have to be next door to your house on Lake Melissa either. I'm sure you won't appreciate it. So I would certainly hope you would all take a real good hard look. Mr. Varrberg, I've had your services. They're great, but if I were you, I'd recuse my vote. If there's any thought that I might have an advantage to this, I would step back and say, no, I'm not gonna, I'm just not gonna vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up? Please, please state your name. And I'd like to also like to remind the crowd that if you're not speaking, that please do not make noises, clapping hands. We appreciate you not doing that. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Monica Douglas, and my husband and I have been a part of the community here in county for over 50 years. 16 years ago, we purchased seven and a half acres of land in the Lake Eunice Township. And eight years ago, we made our dream come true as a reality. We built our retirement home here on that land. It was a very peaceful, beautiful place where we hoped we would spend the rest of our lives. The site of the proposed gravel pit lies just a little bit more than the length of a football field to our property, and we're downwind. This is more than just a disruption to the landscape for me. It's a direct threat to my health. I was diagnosed a couple of years ago with a chronic lung disease called bronchioectasis, even though I never smoked a day in my life. It causes a permanent damage to the airways in my lungs, and breathing is already a daily challenge for me, especially with the smoke, which I'm sure some of you have noticed too. Any increase in airborne dust, diesel fumes, or even the fine particulate matters will make the challenge even more dangerous for me, even life-threatening, according to my pulmonologist. The dust and pollution from a gravel pit are not hypothetical risks. For someone with my condition, they're a guarantee of worsened health. They can trigger infections, serious inflammation, and a permanent setback. Living next to a gravel pit operation could mean that I would have to leave my home, which we worked really hard to build simply to breathe safely. I'm asking you, please do not approve this gravel pit. The consequences will be devastating for me and others in the neighborhood like me, and there are several. I respectfully urge the Becker County Commissioners to put the health and the safety of the community ahead of profits. Approving this permit would place the interests of a single commercial operation over the well-being of dozens of families who have interest, invested their lives here, and the long-term consequences of that decision would be irreversible. Thank you for your service in representing all of us in our community, especially those of us who are more vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like, please come up? And then please state your name and your address.
Good morning or afternoon. I'm not sure which we are right now. My name is Lauren Kersting, and I am, I have a shop at Meadows Lane. I received a notification from the commissioners, planning and zoning, that I was in that area of concern. I have 10 years of planning and zoning experience myself, and it is an interesting experience. I look back on and think about some of the difficult times we went through. One of the things that we were told every meeting was always remember the comprehensive plan. Always refer back to the comprehensive plan. What have we told people we're going to do? So that when anybody came and said, I want to build here, I want to buy this lot, we could tell them what was coming up behind them, around them. Commissioner Nelson mentioned about consistency on the plan with the commercial and saying it's nice to keep consistency. I don't understand how this kind of got through the planning and zoning commission from the standpoint of if they'd have looked at that part of it. How is a potential, a gravel pit consistent with all our residents? I have a 42 by 120 shop. I have my collector cars in there, and I just enjoy going down there three, four times a week. My car almost knows how to drive without me because I'm, I'm from West Fargo and I drive down here all the time. We have a lake place on Lake Ida. So we spend a lot of time down here, and it's my, it's my peaceful getaway. Now, in my situation, I can keep my windows closed, my doors closed when there's, when there's dust out there. So I can survive that. I don't like it, the idea of that whole thing, but that's what I'd have to do. My biggest concern is my sister, Monica Douglas, has a health issue, and I'm just absolutely beside myself why we wouldn't think of that as the number one thing that we have to, you know, you people have to address. That is important, I think. You know, one of the things that we also learned when I, or I learned when I was on a commissioner is that we consider the opposition to something on a cup. That was important to us as, as a commission that dealt with that. So when you see so much opposition to this, I guess that tells you something that when we bought, we didn't know that anything like that was even possible. So I would highly recommend too that it not be approved on the basis of consistency as well as, as those of us who purchased some property down there that we absolutely love, and, and it's nice property. It's, there's really nice properties down there, so. And again, I thank you for your work too, and I, I know the difficulty from commissioners who have to make the final decision.
Thank you. Yes, please come up. And remember to state your name and your address.
My name is Judy Dawson, and I live at 22490 Sins Beach Drive on Pelican Lake. I'm literally one mile from the gravel pit proposed area. Thank you guys for all that you do as well. I walk that road on a daily basis, that mile stretch of Highmark Avenue almost every day. I actually sold Dale and Sue that land many years ago. So, you know, I, I know the land and I know the area. I live right there, and I'm concerned about the, the traffic, the gravel trucks. I drive the downer road on a constant basis as well, and those trucks are a pain as always. Phil and Barry, these trucks are going to go right by your place, Barry. Phil, it could go down your place, but you know, can you imagine if you lived on, between Eunice and Maude, and those trucks are going through that area? That, that already is a terrible area for traffic and, and stuff like that. And it's, it's a very small road. I can't even imagine if that would be coming by through there. I can't even imagine it. And so anyway, I just think that it's, it's a sad deal. I'm sorry that you're a victim, and I'm pretty sure I know someone that would buy that property from you for what you paid for it, if you don't want to be a victim, and none of this would be happening. So anyway, I, I hope you guys vote against it because I think it would be very detrimental to the entire Lakes area. And, you know, I also sell real estate, you know, the property values of Pelican Lake, obviously. You know, we've also got the issue of the, the, you know, itch in the water, and, you know, this is a big deal. So it's a big deal for all of the property area for something like this. It's detrimental. So I hope you vote against it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to, to speak? Yes, please come up. Just remember to state your name.
Good morning. I'm Dave Douglas. Before I start, Matt, I'm sorry. I shouldn't. Those kind of comments are unsettling at best, so this is not personal. Okay? Good morning, everybody. Today I'm asking each of you to vote, you're going to vote today. Vote with your heart and your head. Use your eyes to look around this room, at the people who showed up not just today, but in past meetings. Neighbors, families, community members who are asking you to say no to this gravel pit. Use your eyes to read the written comments, letters, concerns submitted by residents. Concerns about health, safety, air quality, traffic, and the lasting impact this project could have on our community. And use your heart because this decision isn't just about trucks and gravel, it's about health, safety, and the well-being of people who live here. We've all heard the principal rule of real estate is location, 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 right? This is a poor location for this gravel pit. This is a, you look at the Highmark Avenue where it comes off to 138, that's one, there's only two ways out of this place. You're going to go north or south on Highmark. You hit 138, that's only a short stretch, but you're coming out into a blind hill. 93% of County Road 138 is protected by no passing zones. That should be concerning. So if you don't like that, let's go, let's go south on Highmark. Okay? That'll take you out to County Road 20 on Pelican Lake. We go to, we go to St. Mary's Lake Church every Sunday, and I drive that road frequently. People walking, riding bikes, and they don't have the benefit of that stretch over there of that walkway that's further, further west. So it's very concerning. None of us are anti-development, but this gravel pit is simply a bad location. This is about putting people before profit and doing what's right. I thank you for your time, your service. I know the weight of the decision you hold today is big. We all understand that. So I'm just asking you to vote no on this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody, would anybody else like to come up and speak? Okay, so we are going to close the public comment unless one of us commissioners requests someone to come up and do some explanation for us. We, we don't have why if I had to.
Vote noon, according to Judy.
Okay. No, I just, I have the, I, I read it. I just, the reclamation.
I have copies if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like a written. Thanks, Scott. All the fact findings. No, the, the, their reclamation that he sent us. Oh, the fact, I mean, no, the, their reclamation that he sent us. Yeah. I read it, so I know what it said. The reclamation, that, that one, I got it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May as well start.
Yeah, go ahead.
The dialogue. I think the first thing, and it's been brought up, I think, by someone here today, that you look at, you know, we just spent a pile of money on the comprehensive plan, and there's no mention of a gravel industrial area in this area. This is a, you know, it is a residential area. As the developers are pursuing residential area, there's no question that's what this should be and will be. With that said, I don't, you know, I don't think this is appropriate for a gravel pit. I think this, for that five years, is a, I mean, it's just not, it's not reasonable in my mind, and if you, I think that will cause harm to the residents that live there. I know Matt, and I want to start, Matt and Nick are great people. I mean, those, the negative comments that they've received, they're not justified. I know both of them, and that's not, they're trying to, they're doing a project, and I think that's admirable, they're, you know, the end product will be a benefit to the county. So they, it's not the project, but the crushing and the gravel pit part of it are a concern. I'm just, it's not a comprehensive plan, I think that's part of it, I think you, I mean, you mentioned you talked to Dean and Sue. Dean and Sue are very good friends of mine, and I know exactly where they live. They are going to be the most impacted people on this project, and
Other than my son, Chris.
And they are, they're good people, they're willing to compromise, too. I don't think, if they had the choice, Dean had said he'd rather not have it at all. I mean, that's the obvious choice. So looking at this, I would, I could support removing the gravel, I mean, removing the product. It's the crushing and the mine, you know, this, and I don't think they want a gravel pit, and they've said that numerous times, that we don't want a gravel pit. It's, so is there a, is there a way, I mean, and I think Tammy mentioned the no crushing on site. And I know that would be a hindrance to the contractor that wants to sell this, but that might be a solution where it will reduce the negative impact on the surrounding area. That's
And the only problem with that, Barry, is that that's such a small part of the problem here. I understand nobody wants the trucks, nobody wants the dust, nobody wants any of this stuff, but the crushing is not, that's a very, that, I don't know where these guys get their crushers. Some people rent them, some people have somebody come in and do it. They come in, they do it as fast as they can do it, and they're gone. And so the problem is, the trucks are still going to be there, the loaders are still going to be there, they don't need a permit for any of that. The only difference, so there will be some inconvenience and noise, the crusher doesn't, most of your dust comes right from under the truck tires, that's just the way it is. So they're not going to, there's not a huge gain by not putting that, crushing it and putting it in a pile, there's just not a huge gain there. And we already know that they can haul everything out of there, and that's, loading it and hauling it, that's the everyday noise and the everyday inconvenience that's going to be there, and we already know they can do that. And that's the only reason, nobody wants a gravel pit next to their house, that, nobody does. But unfortunately, it's a necessary thing for any development, and people are gonna, when they're building homes, I talked to a woman who called me yesterday, and she's building a new home, and, yeah, so, I mean, we're not, it would add a lot of cost to it. I don't know that they would, I've never heard of anybody, you know, I shouldn't say that, Row Log, they used to haul it out and crush it in one spot. They're not doing that anymore. It costs a lot more money to do that that way. And I don't, I don't know what the big benefit is. If they're going to come in and crush once a year, and it takes two or three weeks to do it, and it's a huge cost impact to them, I guess that's what I
Well, the time, Mr. Chair, the timeframe, too, I mean, is not reasonable, in my opinion. And I, and I know the developers now got a land alteration permit. Kyle, that is a one-year permit, extendable for a year?
They could apply year after year.
So that permit can be ongoing. In my opinion, I think that's how the developer will manage the parcel that's going to be, I assume, approved on the 11th. They can do most of their work without this mining permit in the next two years. This, if we approved the permit today, if it was approved, whatever conditions are on it, they have two years to enact that, correct?
Yes.
So what I'm saying most likely will happen is the contractor has the opportunity to do internal work on-site for two years, and then you have to enact, then two years, the clock on this conditional use permit starts, if you don't do it within two years, it ends, it's dissolved. So once two years passes, then you can start this, start this permit, and you can go, you know, as is, five more years. So it can go on, I mean, that's a long, that's a seven-year project. I mean, potentially, if you approve this. So, I mean, I think that it should be reduced to a one-year. You'd have the time before that, two, I mean, they have the internal time, and then the clock afterwards would be a one-year, a one-year time slot to do any off-sale on, off-site. That's
Apologize.
Happens to all of us.
I mean, I think for me, I have to agree with Barry. I think when we look at it, the dust is going to happen no matter what, right? Because we're going to be moving the land, or moving the
Well, we could minimize that, and I would want that minimized with dust control on the road. A lot of gravel pits don't have that, and they're very dusty, but that's where most of it, and I would not, I would not vote for that operation if we didn't dust control it.
You mean the internal roads? Huh? You mean the internal roads?
The internal roads, and I believe they agreed to do the Highmark Township Road there, too, didn't you? Yeah.
Well, that would be a township agreement that we'd have to
Yeah, but I want that, I want the haul road in and out of there, because that's where most of this dust, and they're going to have, they're going to be hauling that stuff, like I said, either way.
But I think we have to look at this, I guess where I'm looking at it is, this is, you do look at our land use, our comprehensive land use plan, and this isn't an industrial area. So where I, but it is housing. So, I mean, the, which this is going to lead to housing.
Yes.
But I don't know that I can agree to having crushing on the property for the sake of the neighborhood. That, to me, is my, my biggest issue, is the crushing, you know, the mining, using explosives, whatever, some of the things that is not, Norgard asked for us to consider. But I also look at this as, they, the only reason they're doing this is because they want to sell it. If they didn't want to remove and sell it, they, we wouldn't be here. So that's just my thoughts. I'm not sure where I stand in it all, but I also would agree on the length. I don't think five years is appropriate. I would, in my notes that I had made myself last night, I had, I think, two years, but I do think that five years is too much. Do we know about what the percent of rock crushing would be? Like, of this 350,000 cubic yards that we're asking to remove, how much, do we have a percentage of what that would be, how much of that would be crushing?
Did you come up, Matt, soon? Yeah, please.
Because what I've learned in this whole process is, you can say anything. So I'm going to say zero.
Well, then I'll say no crushing.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's where I go, then.
When there's zero, how can you say no crushing?
Because there's no need for it.
Right. Okay. But that's what I've learned. But in listening to some of the comments, is, I'm beside myself, I really am, because what they're saying, you know, explosives, okay? There was no explosives out there? That's a silly request. Here's another silly
It isn't a silly request, though, when you consider what a gravel mine is.
Right.
So, I mean, and that's where I think we have to consider, and where they're considering it, is when you see what constitutes a gravel pit, it is the rock crushing, it is the mining, it is the explosives. So that is where they're coming from.
Yeah, but that's not true, Erica. No mine, nobody uses explosives around here to get gravel out. They don't do that.
Then it's a mute point.
They'll use the
Yeah, it's a mute point, yeah.
Yeah, it's not. He's right about that, that that is
I do have a question, and maybe this is for Mr. Sonnenberg. Do you, so, your plan is to use roughly 200,000 yards in the reclamation of the, of the, or to do the infrastructure, to build the roads. So does that gravel need to be crushed? That they're going to use, the internal gravel?
You'll need gravel crush for your
Yeah.
For your infrastructure.
So, and
Kyle?
With your experience with gravel pits, are there gravel pits that don't do crushing on-site?
Everything that I've known and been around is on-site. It's too costly to haul it off.
I believe we have approved gravel pits since I've been here that have had conditions of
We've approved boro pits, I know, and that's, I mean, the boro pits that don't have, that don't crush anything. So it's the same thing, it's a mine, it's a gravel, you're mining the product out. Kyle, can a individual, can, say they, say you approve or disapprove this, but in the next two years, if the developer's building and hasn't not applied or taken advantage of the conditional use permit, can they bring a crusher in for their own use?
I would have to say yes, if you, I mean, if you wanted to make some gravel for your own driveway.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm asking, I mean, I
I think we could prevent that, that would, you know
I'm just, I mean, I'm just putting the cards on the table for everyone to know
Right.
What can happen regardless of how this moves forward.
Right.
So, just to clarify what you're saying, Barry, is
If they are not
If two years from now, when we don't have a conditional use permit, but they have a pile of sand, gravel, whatever, that needs to be crushed, they don't need a permit if they're going to use it themselves?
I'm saying, yes, but if we approve something today, and they don't activate that for two years, in the next two years, if it's for their use, they can bring a crusher in, I believe
I don't know how you would say no, like I said
To use for their own road usage.
If you were built, for instance, your driveway is quite lengthy, if you came to me and said, "I would like to mine some gravel at my own home and build this road," I don't know
I don't, I don't think we
I don't know the mechanism we would use.
Right. So that's, I'm just, I'm just looking like, you know, like you would, like, trying to get, put everything on the table to show that, you know, this, how we move forward, how this can move forward. So when you, when you add those things together, a one-year, in my opinion, a one-year permit isn't so outrageous, because you have that time beforehand, and that's how I, because I always look, and maybe it's my deceitful mind and, you know, how I look at things. I always look at what will, what can happen to this, what will be, you know, what are the, what are the most
Mr. Nelson, I understand where you're going with this, too, but you can have so many conditions. Like, we're asked, how many truck loads a day? What are the hours of operation? What's the time of the operation?
Yeah, we understand.
You can't reduce all those down, where it's not even a viable project anymore. I mean, I can understand, you know, we already reduced our hours, we already reduced when we can crush, and then they're asking for, I want to tell you how many trucks are going to go out a day, and I want this done between eight and five o'clock, and then I want it done within a 12-month timeframe?
I think
You can't have all those things.
I think, I think we are familiar with people's requests and how it works.
And a 12-month timeframe could be extended, correct? If at the end of the 12-month time period?
No, it would have to come back.
I mean, yes, it would have to come back, but
Through full process.
I'm just saying, it could happen, though.
So, again, I think the question in front of you is, can they profit off removing this and making it Class 5, and use it on township roads and county roads? Or are we not going to allow them to do that? With you turning this, the cup down, and we have to do it without maintaining the roads, without your permission? So I think that's
Well, we certainly do not look at whether you can make money off the project or not. That's not, that's not a, something that we take into
Right, right. It's been wrought up, though.
Yeah. I mean, from our decision-making, that is not a
Okay.
I mean, best to you, but
Right.
Whether, whether or not it's a
Yeah.
You know, some of the things that I was on-site, and one thing that I would ask, and I think they're doing it already, is the approach where you come off that property is farther south, so it's less impactful to Dean and Sue's property, so it's farther away from them, closer to your sons, I think.
Yes, and we even put it on my sons, if necessary.
So, I mean, that, that is a positive that they've already, I mean, I think already doing.
And I want to stay as far away from Dean and Sue's as we can, and make it, don't forget, they have a beautiful place there. If you got to go there, you got to see his two chandeliers he made. They're awesome. And I, do I want to bother them? No, they have a wonderful, beautiful place there, and I want it to be as, in a perfect world, they wouldn't even know we were there mining, but you know that's not going to happen. There is going to be, and I warned them that, I said, "This isn't a 10-year project, it's five years, I wish, I hope it's two years." But we're going to get it out of there as fast as we can, without restrictions, and get you back, put the reclamation plan together, black dirt, seed it, and have it just like it is right now. And that's our plan for this property. It's not for a gravel pit or a mining operation, and I've said that before, so.
Well, I think you are being honest when you say you don't want a gravel pit. I mean, I believe you, but I don't know how, because we don't want that either.
Right.
But what constitute, what, where is that? And how do we, how do we state that? Because I mean, and I think we disagree a little bit on length, I do think a shorter time is, I think a contractor would love to, I mean, if I'm a contractor, I'd love this to go 20 years, so I, when I have something closer by, I have the product close, I mean, that's common sense. But I think if we're not worried about contractors' potential future projects, I think this can be done a lot, your project can be done a lot quicker, in my opinion.
And that's my wish, too.
Richard, maybe you can answer this for me. In a typical gravel pit that's mined, how much of the topsoil is typically mined?
Usually, they don't mine any of it, they'll push it off to the side. Some of it is sold, because top sales, topsoil is, but I don't know that they do that there, I don't know how much that they, most of the time, you don't have any extra to sell. So what they'll do is they'll push it all off to the side, take the gravel out, and they'll push it all back over.
And you saw in the mining plan what it is to build a seven-to-nine-foot berm on the north side and the west side. And you also saw in there that, you know, stormwater, there will be no stormwater, it's going to be retained on premises on that 90 acres. It's not going to run off in the neighbors.
You know, one of the other comments with Jake breaks, and this is quite a coincidence, because I have a, I just had this last weekend, someone complained about Jake breaks on Becker 1 in the project, and Jim, Jim's not here, but in Becker 1, using their Jake brakes, coming down to stop at Highway 10, and there, it's an overuse and very, so I had that conversation, and Clay County has an ordinance against Jake breaks, and something that we might want to look at, but a Jake break going in that area, going in the lakes area, is absolutely, would be not appropriate, in my opinion.
I want to address one other thing, is safety I want to address one other thing, is safety, which is, is top priority. And as I stated before at, at the last meeting, I, I live 100 feet from a gravel pit that was mined for seven years. And that is right on the curve, if anybody knows where Bleacher's Bar and Restaurant is, it's right on that curve. Very, very dangerous. Thousands of trucks came out of there over the seven-year period, and I am happy to report, there was not one accident. There was not one child ran over on their bike. There was not one walker hit by a truck. And, and this is just from personal experience, that I, I, I lived this, what they're, they're complaining about. So, what this is coming down to, Barry, and you know this, that it's just okay to have gravel pits, just not in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I think the, the only, one thing I would like for safety concerns would be a, and I think the county would provide this, a car approaching or approaching traffic when you come out from Highmark Road and make that stop sign, there should be a, and there's those available where you say have approaching traffic, because that, that crest of that hill-
We discussed that already in planning-
Would be, would be very concerning. But that, I, I do believe that, and there is a number of places in the county that could benefit from that approaching traffic.
In your mining plan, you have 200, 350,000 cubic yards to be extracted?
Correct.
And I'm, I'm just asking for clarification, 150,000 cubic yards of that will stay for your roads, or?
The estimate was 25,000 was needed for the interior road. So, then the engineer told us that we had to remove the rest to have it off premises, to make those lots degrade, to make them buildable. And then this is a number that we came up with, this is a number, we, we paid Apex $20,000 to do all the work, the cartography and everything, we paid them that amount of money to come out and, because we're, to tell us what we need to do.
Because I, I thought at the planning commission-
I saw a higher number.
150,000 was mentioned in 200,000, like, 150,000 was what was required onsite, and 200,000 was what was going to be-
Removed.
Removed.
Offsite. There was different numbers than your 25 on, I, I-
That was before Apex.
Well, I thought John was involved right away, and give you the number, when he gave you the number.
I believe what you're talking about was before they come out with their report of what needed to go both ways. That would have had the very first meeting, correct?
The very first planning commission back in, was it May, June? How long have we been doing this?
Oh, yeah, I think it was-
June?
Yeah.
And that's just- Is that just the township road that would go through, go through, or does that, that include any usage by people that buy the property? It doesn't include, okay. They'd have to do their own stuff.
Which, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. Product on, if we didn't have to haul in, there would be opportunities for people who buy lots and need to build their driveways, to have it right there without having trucks going down Highmark Avenue and delivered to, to site, which I, I think is, is a benefit to the person buying the lot, it's also a benefit to the neighbors.
So, then it would be more than 25,000 yards if you were gonna do that?
It certainly could be.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, please come up here. Matt, yeah, you can just, just switch, please, switch with her.
It's all warm for you.
I just want to, given some of this conversation about, can we, you know, could they crush on site if they needed the material on site? I mean, if you deny the conditional use permit, and they need 25,000 cubic yards to build their road, apparently, you're saying they can do that on site without a conditional use permit. So, what this really is requesting is, do we open a commercial, for-sale gravel operation in the middle of a residential area? And that's where I think, that's the question that you guys have to decide, is, is this appropriate? And no, that if you say yes, you're not gonna stop anybody else from doing something like this into the future. And next time somebody says, well, this isn't conforming with your comprehensive plan, and if you say, you know, well, we're not gonna allow it, it doesn't conform with our comprehensive plan, they're gonna throw this in your face, saying, well, you don't follow your comprehensive plan here, you put a industrial use in the middle of a residence. And so, I guess that's where I'm saying, you can allow this developer to succeed and to have their residential development and build their roads at no cost, crush their gravel on site that they need to put the road in, but why do you need to allow them to have this huge economic industry that's an industrial use in the middle of a residence, a residential area? And I think that's the question that's being posed to you, and I don't know why you would do it, I think it's a terrible precedent to set. And they could use the big rocks for decor, if they have this big, wonderful subdivision, there's huge rocks everywhere that look beautiful, and they can have that as, you know, decorations for the landowners that are buying those lots, there could be lots of uses for that, and then you don't have the truck traffic, you don't have the dust, you don't have the safety hazards, you don't have to have the township road agreements, and it just seems like that would be a win-win.
You're gonna have the trucks, no matter what you do.
The trucks are-
The trucks are gonna be there, and that, this is, it may be worse if you push it, shorten the time.
The, the trucks, the trucks are-
If you got, if they're, if they're given a shorter amount of time, I'm gonna tell you, they're gonna get more trucks, and there's gonna be more trucks, and if there's nothing to say what they can do, there, that, if, if you tell me, I got so many days to get this out of here, I'm gonna get every resource I can to get it out of here, that's, if, and so, how many trucks do you want? I mean, I, yeah, so that, that's not, that's not the best thing either, a lot of trucks is not-
If there was, if you were allowed to have the crushing and, and have a pile, say this, say you, an example would be, say you did some site work prior to, I mean, with the land alteration permit, and you are ready for, and then you apply for your permit and get the crusher in there, say, say, say I make a motion for a one-year mining operation, and they'd get this huge, they get this pile crushed that's sitting there. And then after the year, the, the mining project is done, but we have a pile of gravel there, and that can be removed in the next, within the next five years. Is that, is that doable, or if that, is that a, you know, I'm-
I don't know how that works for those guys, because usually, they don't make that big a piles.
No, exactly.
And they try and, so they're, they're trying to, you know, you're gonna have-
I think we have to also think of, we, we have to have a compromise, we can't think of what's best for the developer and what's best for the excavating company, and then not think about what's best, like, I think, we have, we have to have a compromise and-
We could make things worse for, for the neighbors by, if, if we make the wrong decisions, we could make things worse for them.
But I think a contractor's only, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a contractor's only gonna crush if they got a sale.
Well, usually, they'll crush a, a pile, and then they'll sell it, and when that's gone, they'll crush another pile. And five years is not a long time to get that gravel out of there, it's just not. Everybody seems to think that that's a long time, that's not a long time.
Well, it is a long time, I think, in the next-
I don't think, in the life of a gravel pit, it's not a long time, but the life of a residence, it's a- Kylie Kent, you gotta speak in the mic. He just stated that another gravel company in the area said their maximum that they've hauled out, or their reasonable amount was 70,000 annually, 70,000 yards annually. Pardon me?
It would probably be a high end.
Uh, the high end would be 70,000, that was for another, but again, um-
But then you're asking for more truck traffic, and I, I, I agree, Erika, we have to look out for these people, and that everybody has to be looked out for here, but just something that sounds good could maybe end up being worse for you.
Well-
And we know that they can take the material out of there without any, anything, they, so they can have a lot of trucks, and this is-
Well, I mean, I, what we can't control, we can't control. What we can control, we, we have to put-
But we can think about the implications of this and not try and get that stuff hauled out of there as fast as possible, and not have two years of-
Well, we can limit it to 100,000 also, instead of 350.
The material, though, but don't they have to remove, you, you need to remove so much.
Again, you are talking about a developer's wishes, what they want their end product to look like.
Their, 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 their scale, that's, that, that's not what our goal in here is, to make sure that, that it's accommodated.
I mean, that, whether, whether they want it flat on sea level, we, it's, it's, you can't take, you can't make your decision, because this is what our, what we want our end product to look like, in my opinion. What if they wanted to, what if they want to add product, I mean, those, to get what he, I mean, maybe, maybe those lots would have to be five-acre lots to be saleable instead of two-and-a-half acres. So, what I'm saying, just because that's what the most profit would bring you, doesn't mean that that's what we need to go with, that's-
Would, did you want to say something? Please come up, Matt, sit down.
You said developer, this, this is from Apex Engineering, this isn't, this number is not from me. This is what they said that had to be taken off material off-
To achieve your goal.
To make it buildable.
Again, that's your goal. Your goal is to make every two-and-a-half acre lots buildable. And when we, I mean, there are lots in this county that aren't buildable because of this, I mean, the steepness, and, and when, so I'm just saying that, but this is not where, every, every lot may not be buildable.
Let me understand this, though. Now, you have a permit to, right, to, to make these lots?
Yes.
Okay, so is, is there a limit on what you could take out of there right now?
No.
Those? No.
No.
So, right now, he can take the 375 or whatever it is, that's what I'm saying, he, he can already take it.
Because I can't win that there's gonna be a road project out in that area, I said again, 2028, and we could just leave it, because if the, if the county doesn't need it at that point, we, we don't need a cup. And they can, they can build a, they can put a plant on there for asphalt, they can do the whole nine yards. And do I want to do that? Absolutely not. Isn't an option? Absolutely, but-
But that's not an option we can consider.
And that's not something we can control.
Yeah.
No, right, right. Well, well, I guess you can, because if we can get it off there, there's gonna be nothing for the project, for us to get rid of. We got rid of it in three years, and they're talking, three years from now, that they're looking for some aggregate, and, sorry, even though we're a half mile from you, we don't have it.
There is a lot of aggregate, if you get in the Lakes area, there's lots of hills and knobs, especially you get south of, south in the, over by Becker 1, I mean, it's not quality gravel, but there's fill all, all over.
And homes.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think the bottom line is, what's, now, we can't control everything, but what would be reasonable in our, in our approval to the, to the neighboring properties? I do, I do think with, with, where the proximity to Dean and Sue, there's my example of how close they are, they are, they are the ones most impacted, and I have had conversations with both Dean and Sue, and they are, I mean, they are good people, they're not willing just, they're not just saying, no, that I don't want anything, and they, they would like nothing, but they understand that, you know, something's gonna happen.
And, and to be honest with you, that, that was the end game, I feel, of this, was have nothing happen, just put the cattle back out there.
Oh, I'm sure for some.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody, nobody, none of us likes change, I think everyone here included, when it affects us, so. I think, as much as I would like just to, just to be easy and say, no, this shouldn't, there should be nothing, I do, I do feel that there is an opportunity to remove some of it, but I think the timeframe and the, so, I mean, I, I, and I haven't heard from a couple commissioners, so I don't know what they are gonna, what they're thinking, so I'm gonna just start this and make a motion to concur with planning and zoning with the alterations of a one-year project, dust control on the haul road, no haul-in product, no crushing on site with the Lake Eunice Road Agreement and Becker County Road Agreement, reducing it to 250,000, no Jake breaks, and again, a one-year window.
So, I just want, so I just want to make sure, clear, you got one-year project window, no crushing on site, 250,000 yards instead of 350, right?
Yeah.
Um, that can be removed, that can be removed and sold. And then, what, what else? There's two more. And no Jake breaks?
And again, just reiterating the one-year.
Yeah. And then, um, did you say anything about, you said dust control with the, with the township?
On, and on the haul road.
Yeah, yeah. That's gotta be in conjunction with Eunice Township, right? Correct? Might correct.
Internally is internally.
Yeah, internally is them, but Eunice Town, yeah, okay.
Road agreement.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, there's a motion-
Yeah, there's a motion, yeah. Well, we have to have a second in order for us to have discussion.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion by Barry and a second by Erika. All right, now we can have some, please, Kyle, we have discussion on-
So, the planning permission held a special meeting, and there were some findings adopted by that body, since that-
You move the mic over here.
The planning commission adopted some findings at a special meeting held in, I believe it was June. Since that timeframe, our office has retained Kristen Nierengartner, and she is online. She provided us some findings with conditions that were given to you yesterday. So, concurring with planning and zoning, Mr. Chair, would be different than what was provided to you yesterday, I just want to clarify that.
And we have that.
With, within that document, there was 12, 12 conditions.
It's, we got it yesterday, or no, just now, and yesterday.
It was emailed yesterday.
Yeah, it was emailed yesterday, we also have a paper copy.
So, you would ask that we just concur with this and, instead of this?
Instead of the, instead of the planning commission, yes, I would ask that you adopt these findings provided to you yesterday.
And that's fine with the, with me as the motion maker?
It's fine with me as the second.
With these findings of fact?
There are major differences from what you guys just- There's a couple differences.
But mine-
Yesterday, yes, but the first set of findings, we would basically nix, and we would adopt these, and then go through them to make sure that they are adequate to Mr. Commissioner Nelson's condition.
Changes, changes within.
You know, I just want to make an objection for the record, because you were provided with findings and a document approving a conditional use permit with all the reasons for it before any of us showed up today. And so, that would just mean our testimony means nothing, and so, you're being asked just to adopt something that was sent to you yesterday without incorporating any of the testimony, and it's your job as the county commissioners to make the findings, because I wouldn't be talked into just adopting whatever findings some people-
Mr. Chair, and these, the changes that I made would be overruling any, the, the findings, so it'd be, we'd be incorporating the, the conditions that the motion maker in second put on the, with the findings of fact.
Well, and for the record, we could have adopted findings today that was denying this application. We, we can do that as well, so.
So, Kyle, with, with the motion and the voice conditions, they would supersede what's, what we have in here, is adequate for our motion?
Well, I think, yeah, I think I would-
Or do you want to go?
I think I would go through these one by one, and then if we have to amend them, sort of, if that is okay with you?
I would like, I would like, I would like to ask the motioner in the second if they would be willing to amend the one-year to two-year.
Because right now, how much, how much time, if he doesn't crush, if he just hauls out the material, how much time will he have to do that with the permit they have now?
Well, one year, and it's, it's a hundred-dollar permit, so he could come in every year.
So, he could come in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the conditional use permit has-
And on, on your motion, Barry, he doesn't have that option?
The, he's got the land alteration permit now.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So, he-
We're actually going backwards, so he'd be better off not to have anything from us right- Better off not to have anything from us right now and just go with what he's got.
That's, that's how I kind of stated or explained. He can do as much prep work for two years as he wants with that land alteration permit. And.
So technically that gives him, it's giving him three years.
Yes.
Two years with the land alteration.
Here, here, here's the issue I have with just the one year.
Crush his own.
Um, we've, we've already stated that the removal of 250 yards, let's say, let's say he's going to keep 50, 200 yards is not going to be able to be done in one year. So that's why I'm saying two years would be more realistic to have it removed. And, and you know what I mean? Have it sold. Does that make sense?
Yeah, when you say a large operation removes 70,000.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And you're giving us a one-year to remove 250,000, um, the math doesn't add up.
That's, that's all I'm saying.
We, we could reduce it to 70,000.
Well, that's still, that, he's better off, so what you're doing is, he's better off with nothing then, is really.
You can't sell offsite until, for that one year.
If he, if he doesn't have anything, he can't sell anything.
Yeah.
He can move on his own property and, and stockpile and.
And remove.
You can remove.
Yeah.
I said sell anything.
You just can't sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, and, and I, I understand that. I'm just saying, would it, would you be open, would you two be open to amending your motion from one year to two? That's, that's.
I'm not. At this.
Uh, please do not make comments. We are deciding, so thank you.
As we stated, if after a year, he needs to apply for another permit for additional sales, we would be back here, as unpleasant as that may be. I mean, we, we would be back here to, to address it again. I just think we, we have to consider everybody, um, and, and how this affects everybody and I think this is the best way. Nobody wants to be back here to, to do this in one year or three years, but hopefully in three years, everybody here will realize it isn't a big deal and maybe we won't have so much controversy. But I think for now, this is, this is, I agree with Commissioner Nelson and then I would stick to a year.
So, so Kyle, do, do you want to go through the specific, the, the specific not matching up conditions right now?
I would and, and I'd just like to make sure that I have.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, I would like that.
Accurately, so I think if we can go through them one by one and.
Yep.
Commissioner Nelson, if you want to modify them or what have you, that would be great. Uh, so the first condition is Prairie Lake and any successor and any interest must comply with the mining and reclamation plan submitted on July 29th, 2025.
What page are you on first?
10.
Uh, 10.
We got to find each 10. As I have that one.
Kami, would you like to snap a picture of this?
She's got a copy.
She's got a copy.
Um, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Number one is Prairie Lake and any successor and interest must comply with the mining and reclamation plan submitted on July 29th, 2025, except as specified specifically modified by these conditions. So that's number one.
As, as modify, um.
Basically, what it's saying is if it's an exemption, if these conditions modify that plan, then it would still be binding.
I think the modification then would be.
Well, what it would be modifying is the number of cubic yards, the time, like the additional conditions that we would have on.
Right. So we'd, we'd add.
That's a catch-all.
Yep.
Okay.
Number two, normal mining operations are restricted to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Crushing hours are restricted 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Hey, please, I'm going to ask you one more time to please not make comments.
Number, number three, then the crushing maker only would be deleted at that with this motion.
So.
Number, number three would be deleted as would the crushing hours?
No, the mining operations.
According to, according to his motion, yes. He said no crushing, so that would be removed.
Okay, so can they still crush their own stuff?
Yep.
Yes. They can't sell that much.
Prior to the, prior, I mean, I would, to make it cleanest, prior to the one-year mining, on, before they act for the, that would be the cleanest, but. Let's move on.
So three is eliminated on your motion. The hour, number two is good though, right?
Except for the crushing hours are restricted to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
That's deleted.
Delete that last one.
Number three is deleted.
So is the.
May only occur before.
Is the intent of that to put up as much, much material as possible and then basically material can be sold in a one-year timeframe? Is that what I'm understanding?
What was the, repeat that?
Well, there's this side conversation about crushing their own material, so if, if, if they wanted to go crush, again, most of the time, it, it's not going to be 100,000 yards of material in one pile, it's going to be like 5,000 or 10,000. So is the idea to say, hey, um, go crush as much as you can in this two-year timeframe and we'll let you sell it in one year?
That, not with this motion right now. The, the crushing now would only be for, for your use or for your personal use, I mean.
So if they crushed, if they crushed 50,000 and they use 25,000, they could not sell that excess?
According to our laws, that would be a no.
Okay.
According to our current.
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, because actually when they do crush, you know, they always crush more and then it gets left there. Can they leave it there in a big pile or what can we do? Because you're making it really, this is making it really hard for these guys to operate and.
They're not, there won't be, the crushing would be limited to their road only is what, that's, I'm trying to make this clear, so if this were to pass and we leave here.
Yep, there's.
The gra, you, you're only creating classified for your own project.
It could be for their own project offsite too, for your own use offsite.
They wouldn't be able to sell it, yeah.
So that.
But that being said, we, we can crush as much, we can crush as much as we want, as long as we don't sell it.
Right.
And there's no restriction on ours?
No.
No.
No. And there's no, no restriction on how many truck loads?
No.
Okay, thank you.
When you, when you, during the year of your conditional use, or during your conditional use per.
No, he's saying he can crush his material right now. If he's not, if you're not selling the material, these conditions don't apply.
Right.
Correct.
That's our land alteration permit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I would disagree with that.
I don't.
That's the very premise of having a conditional use permit for a mining, he's asked for mining and crushing, you're saying no crushing.
But that follows.
I don't know that I agree with your take on.
Mr. Chair, I think that's a discussion, a legal discussion.
That's a legal discussion for some other time. So my understanding is that, that.
We have legal counsel online if you'd like to ask.
Well, yeah.
Let's ask her.
If there's a, can a person, can a person that's operating on their own land crush a product or use a product in their, on their, for their own property or their own use?
So I'm Kristen Nierengartner. As Kyle said, I have been working with the county, um, as, as the county's been navigating this application. Um, I will say, you know, I am unable, because your internet is down, I'm unable to access your ordinance right now, so I cannot consult the ordinance language specifically. Um, and, and so on that front, I mean, I'm going to defer to Kyle on this and if Kyle's understanding of the ordinance is that, you know, the definition of mining or an extraction, extractive use requires, um, or, or is part and parcel with a commercial, you know, sale of that product, then, um, you know, if the selling is not happening, um, then the restrictions from the conditional use permit and that would require a conditional use permit wouldn't apply. But again, I don't have the language in front of me right now because the, um, the ordinance isn't accessible to me.
So, so to be fair, we're not saying for sure either way right now, we'll have to.
It's not, mining is not specific to crushing again, so if you have a farm and you were to borrow 50 yards of material for your driveway, we would not require a conditional use permit for that. And again, mining is not specific to crushing. You're not going to require a CUP for each individual that borrows three yards of material off their property. That would be the same instance here. The ordinance doesn't say, well, you, you've crushed now 10,000 yards, now you need a CUP. It's.
I don't think we have, I don't think we have anything in our ordinance that would, would say that.
And that's what I said earlier, there's not a mechanism in place. Would it be the, the intent of anybody that someone's going to go crush 200,000 yards and give it away? No, that's not rational, that's not reasonable and no reasonable person would do that. But could you? Right now, I would say there's no mechanism in place.
I, and I think I agree with that and, and I, maybe that's ordinance we looked at. I don't think it's going to happen, but.
Right, it's not reasonable or rational.
No.
Okay, let's keep moving. Um, number four.
Birms no less than seven feet, or no, well, you would get rid of number three as well, so number four, birms no less than seven feet in height from the existing average grade of the property must be placed along the entire north and west perimeter of the project site consistent with the site plan before any mining or crushing activities may occur. Removal of soil from the project site specifically for purposes of constructing the berm shall not constitute mining activities for purposes of this condition. Birms must be maintained so as to avoid erosion and to comply with state and local law on noxious weeds.
So the only thing that we would remove on that would be, in the third, third sentence or the third line would be, or crushing activities, because we're not allowing that, right?
Well, yeah, it's.
Now, am I correct on that?
Just the word, or crushing.
Yeah, that's what I mean, or crushing.
Number five, no mining may take place within 500 feet of the residence located on parcel 170368 dot 006 between the holidays of Memorial Day and Labor Day.
You're good with that one?
Yep. Prairie Lake and any successor and interest must enter into a road agreement with Lake Eunice Township addressing increased wear and tear on Highmark Avenue, dust control and placement of truck, truck traffic warning signs for the area.
And that can, that agreed, it does, you mentioned on the other ones about, and I'll hear the next one.
Number seven, dust control measures must be utilized on the project site designed to reasonably prevent dust from reaching neighboring residences. Number eight, low-frequency backup alarms must be placed and used on any of the equipment required to have alarms in accordance with MSHA and any other applicable agencies. Um, number nine is reiterating number six, but Prairie Lake must provide signs indicating truck traffic for the area. Number 10, Prairie Lake and any successor and interest must comply with all federal, state, and local laws, including all permitting requirements and conditions imposed on such permits related to operations on the project site. Number 11, all mining operations must cease no more than one year after commencement. Prairie Lake or any successor and interest must provide written notice to the county in advance of commencing mining operations on the project site and upon termination of mining activities. Number 12, all reclamation must be completed in accordance with the reclamation plan and within no more than one year after mining operations on the project site have ceased. So what your motion was is we would add an additional of limiting it to 250,000 yards and no Jake breaks.
And I don't, I don't know if we can enforce the no Jake breaks as a individual or as a project specific.
I don't know.
But I think it's something that.
We should look at it as a county.
I think we will be looking at as a county ordinance and I, and it's not very often they're used, but.
Most dump trucks don't have Jake breaks.
But it's some, well, all the ones in, going into Lake Park Hall and concrete out do.
You know, if you, if you look at the ones down here, they don't, but.
Again, the Jake breaks is probably not a non, but recognize that that's a community concern. It's probably non-enforceable, is what I'm saying. We can, it can stay in or come out, but it's.
Kristen did reiterate that as well, that that would be problematic to enforce, so.
So we can remove the Jake breaks, but notice, know that.
Yep.
So then, I've been just making it clear, so in the first, before the, the conditional use permit is good for two years, so within that window, when they're using the land use permit. No, it's, 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 it's good for two years till you start it.
Right.
That's what I'm trying.
They have two years to get it.
Yes.
To implement it.
Implement it, okay, that, yeah, that's where it is going. So, and, and while using the land alteration use permit, they can crush, um, rock or grav for their use.
For their personal.
Personal use. Now, after that is out and the conditional use permit come, they cannot crush rock for their personal use. What about the already crushed rock? Can that be then sold? Because with the conditional use, where it's not being crushed.
Um, the one thing that we did miss is on here, I believe I said no, no hauling in product.
No, we did not say that. Oh, did?
I think I said that in my motion, because I have it listed here.
Oh.
I got it down.
Um, but I, I don't think, I don't think there's a lot of rock on this, it's not a lot of big rock on the site.
No, no.
I don't think it's a.
Mr. Chair, uh, this almost makes it impossible for them.
It really does.
Yeah.
It's so.
To do.
There's not, this is not a compromise.
And it could be worse, I think.
Yeah, I think it is going to be worse. And, and it should, there should, if, this is not a compromise in any way, shape, or form. And it shouldn't be like this.
Can you explain how, how it will make it worse?
He can crush as much as he wants, he can do whatever he wants.
They're not going to.
The sale thing is the big thing.
But if you're going to be in a big hurry to get the material out of there, that's, that's going to be very interesting. You're, you're going to have so much more truck traffic than you would if you sold load by load.
I don't agree with that because I think there's only so many places that want, that want and need gravel at certain times. So the restriction of time will restrict the number of loads. You're going to haul as many loads as you can get sold regardless.
Well, they're not, they're not, this is not something they, this is not a product they can sell very, this is just, at this point, it's just fill.
It's just fill.
That, that's what it is, and so, um.
But we're giving them an opportunity to be able to sell it where.
Yeah, that's not.
Without that, they wouldn't have an opportunity to sell it.
Yeah, but nobody's going to want to buy it. It's, it's, it's not, there's no, you know, that's, it's, it's just not. And I, I would like to see a compromise, this is not a compromise at all. These guys aren't, there, there's nothing here. It's, it's very unfair. This is not a compromise, this is something different.
I, I, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Well, I was just saying, we have a motion in a second, unless you either want to make amendment to it or, or.
I'm going to propose.
Alter it, I, I call a question.
I will, I will propose an amendment. If you guys are, okay, I would propose that, um, keeping it one year and allowing crushing. That would be my proposed amendment.
It's your motion?
That's, no, it's my proposal to amend your motion.
I'm not changing it. You, I'm not changing it. If you wanna amend, make a motion to amend, you make a motion to amend with your changes.
But we have to vote on this motion first, though.
No, you make your amendment during this motion.
Okay, I won't.
You make a motion to amend.
Make a new amendment, make a new motion.
Let's, let's vote on this and make.
No.
We got a motion, a second. We're in discussion. Let's.
You can make, what you're asking to do is to amend this current motion.
Yeah, but is, don't we have to allow the?
You, you can make a motion to amend our motion to what you're asking. And you need a second after that. We mo, we vote for the amendment and then you vote for the afterwards. That's what you're asking.
Okay, I got you. So I'm gonna make an amendment motion to change the one year to two years and to allow crushing. Do I, do I, so I made that mo, motion, I made that amendment motion. Do I have a second? Okay, my motion dies. My amendment dies. All right, so now.
Gotta go back to the.
Go back to the original and call for a vote. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Commissioner Jepson. Um, we'll do, we'll do a roll call vote to make it easier for us, so, um, I'll, I'll, so say aye or nay, if you are.
Just start him, I am.
I'll start with Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion does not pass.
I'll move to make the, I'll move to make the, uh, request for conditional use permit for mining operators as is listed in this report.
I'll second that.
The original.
With no, just to clarify, you're, you're not making any amendments to.
You're not changing the.
Changing anything in the, in the findings of fact.
That is correct. I think it could be worse.
I, I don't see in any way, shape, or form how it could be worse with cha, with reducing and changing. I, there's no, there's no possible way you can make this worse. He's, well, you go five years, now you're, you're allowing it seven years.
Well, you, you made it impossible for these guys to operate. They almost gotta sell the property, so.
So I mean, he could, they can move dirt on there, but I, so it's a CUP commenced in one year even, but they, they could move dirt on the property for another 10 years. The timeline has to be from when it starts in that you have that many years. You can't say five plus two or five plus one.
You can say five plus two, because you have two years before this starts, if you don't act on this within two years, it is nothing. It is dissolved.
Afterwards as well. Hayden could go.
You could not sell anything afterwards.
Not sell, but he can't sell in that two-year timeframe.
No, he can't, but he can do all, you, you can do all the work on site, you can stockpile, you can prep this whole thing for what you need. And then you have, now you have five years more.
I don't think he's gonna, you're not, he's not gonna go crush something and then spend it for two years.
I'm not speculating what can and can't happen. I'm saying what, what's possible, and you're extending this to the seven-year project, up to a seven-year project. And then, like Kyle said, anything after that is ongoing. So can you make it worse? You just made it worse, and no question about it.
Well, I wanted a compromise and you did not give us.
You didn't vote for, you didn't second the second, the amendment.
That wasn't much of a compromise.
I'll make, I'll make another amendment to the motion.
But we don't have a second yet.
No, I second it.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Phil motion, Richard second. So I'll make another amendment to the, I would like to make an amendment that they are, they are not allowed to introduce any other material from another place to crush. And I don't know if we can control the jake breaks, but I'm gonna put that in there.
Oh, you can't.
We already established we can't.
We can't, okay. And then I would also like to have the conditional use permit good for three years. So do I have, that's my, my motion is to conditional use permit for three years, um, no introduction of any out exterior material to be crushed. And those are my.
So if they, if we gave them five.
Point of order.
I have a motion, I have a, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner Nelson seconds. All right, now we can discuss.
So now, if they have three years, they can go five?
They have two years prior to this has to take effect.
Yeah, before expires.
So they can work two years on site, then apply for it before the, and then have three years to do commercial activity.
And there's still the crushing allowed?
And the crushing is still in there?
So what would, basically, we need to, I need to know the first day they sell a load of gravel is what everyone's saying. So if you, they could crush 50,000 yards and leave it sit there for two years, and that would get it to a five-year period. So ba, I don't know.
Well, until they.
I've never looked at it that way, I guess. I don't.
Well, I'm, I'm saying worst-case scenario. I'm get, I'm putting out there what can and will, would possibly be done. Did you, are we discussing your amendment?
Yes, we are.
So it's changing from five to three?
Mm-hmm.
And that's it.
And then not allowing, um, exterior material come in. And then, and keeping it at 300, 350,000.
Who seconded?
I did.
Barry seconded. So now we, so we are.
So we're voting on allowing amendment.
We're voting on allowing, then, then do we have to vote on the motion after that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
You're amending the motion.
You guys are confusing me. Thank you. All right, so we'll take, we'll do a roll call vote on.
Hold it. So it's from five years to three years?
Yep.
And no exterior material brought in?
Yep.
To crush, to crush.
Crush.
To crush.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, so we'll take a roll call vote. Aye, nay, aye?
Aye.
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 All right, so the amendment passes, so now we have to vote on the motion.
Motion which includes a three-year project rather than a five-year.
Yep, so.
But still crushing.
The changing of facts or the finding of facts will, as we went through, will go back to the crushing, so it'd be the original, only alter the timeframe and then no, no, no product brought in.
Yep. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, we'll do a roll call again, so.
Nay.
Nay.
Do you understand?
Are you voting? You said no?
No, hold on. What, okay, we amended the motion.
Yep.
This is to switch it to three years?
Yes.
The motion on the table states three years with no product brought in, otherwise everything concurs with planning is, or concurs with the findings.
Then yes.
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 Okay, motion passes. All right, we have, anything else for the good of the order?
I do not think so.
We are adjourned.